For your service to the town and to the, to the water facilities.
Thank you so much.
That was another day exam.
He passed.
Good job.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Meeting over. That's all we need to talk about.
I know. Let's go. We're done.
We're done.
That was easy budget.
I'm gonna keep my camera off so I can maintain some bandwidth hopefully and don't get booted.
I may be in a similar boat here with Dawn, but I'm gonna try my best.
I'm, I'm actually gonna be traveling to my house, but I'm gonna buzz to the town hall where, where it's quiet. But I'll be on the phone and then on the computer when I get there.
No screaming three-year-olds at the town hall?
Um, hopefully not, hopefully not.
Just Rita.
That's Rita.
Depends on how the night unfolds.
Yeah.
Um, I might be something.
We'll mute while we're screaming.
There we go. Well, I think you have, you have your, at least you have quorum. I didn't think we were expecting Tom tonight. And Macy was gonna do a roll call after you called to order and then we can get started. So whenever you're ready, Mayor Billy.
Thanks. Um, I'd like to call, uh, this budget work session number two to order, um, seven oh four on, uh, October twenty.
Can I call the room?
Yeah, Macy, if you would, that'd be great.
All right. Trustee Kim Zisma.
Here.
Trustee Severs. Trustee Blakemore.
Here.
Trustee Sterling.
Here.
Trusty Corvallone.
Here.
And Mayor Billy.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Oh, I should also note for the record that Mayor Pro Tem behold is going to be absent this evening.
Okay, um, so I think the, we just, um, we're gonna get started with a little PowerPoint. I think it may or may not be a review. Like, I know that Eric and I were not at the meeting two weeks ago. I think this is something of review with, with, um, I know I saw like, you know, some of the recommendations that came from the trustees, you know, since then. So take it away, whoever is doing our, our point.
I will get us started. Yeah. So hello, everyone. Welcome to the work session number two on the 2023 budget. Uh, so the meeting objectives for tonight are to examine the tax revenue five-year trend, which would be a bit of a recap from the last meeting to talk about the fund balance and reserve funds, uh, slight adjustments that we've made within the revenue and expenditures by fund, which we'll go over. Um, we want to discuss capital improvement priorities. Last meeting, we reviewed the recommendations from staff. We have left those in the presentation, but we'd like to talk about some recommendations from trustees for consideration. Um, and then we'll end with just kind of an open session for continued feedback, questions or comments from the board. So these first few slides, I will turn it over to Rita.
Great. Yes. And like Mayor Giblin mentioned, I'm probably just gonna kind of repeat myself just for the couple of trustees that weren't present last, last time. Um, and we'll try to keep it short. So sales tax revenue, um, sales tax revenue is received two month in arrears. Oh, hi Randy, you made it. Anyway, and so what you see on this slide, we have an additional month that has come in. Uh, we received in October, the two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, which was for sales tax in August. And for now, I'm recommending an increase in sales tax revenue of three percent over the twenty-one actuals for the 2023 budget. Not sure if that's gonna stay that way because as you can see, I mean, the comparison between twenty-two and twenty-one has come up to one oh one point three percent. It was a, uh, just about a hundred percent even with twenty-one during the last presentation. So as of right now, leaving it at three percent, which would give us an increase, an overall increase of sixty-five thousand um, in sales tax revenue. But again, um, we're, we're trending pretty similar to twenty twenty-one. Um, and what we could do is wait for another month, which should be coming in around November tenth. So before our next meeting, we can decide at that point, you know, if we want to leave it at three percent or decrease it. Next, we'll talk about the property taxes. Um, so there's a slight decrease of point two percent. Um, when the current va- assessed value is at thirty-five thousand, four eighty-two, thousand, four eighty-six, which is a preliminary figure. And with that figure, that would give us an estimated revenue of six hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Next, we'll talk about the different funds we have. We have a couple of different funds. We have government funds and proprietary.
Rita, this is Mayor Billy. I'm just, I don't know, um, if you want questions along the way or at the end.
Absolutely. Yes.
On the property taxes, just remind me is, um, of the reason why they go down. Went down.
So they are assessed every two years and they are assessed during the odd years. So as far as it, it went down just, just a point two percent. So it wasn't, they're not being assessed this year. So what you're seeing normally would be just what, um, um, increase, in other words, in new, um, buildings. And what happened here is I believe it used to be the assessment rate was at seven point one five percent and they're adjusting that down to six point eight percent.
And that, that's right. Is that statewide or county?
You know, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, you see a big increase and then between twenty-nine to twenty-two. So I'm expecting next year when we work on our twenty-four budget, you'll see that increase because it will be assessed next year.
And that, and that seven point one that went to six point eight, remind me, is that state or county? Like who, who?
That's.
Took that number down? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Cause, okay, great. Thank you. So that's really why this point two percent decrease happened. Okay.
Yes. And again, if you look at between twenty twenty and twenty-one, very small increase as well, right? So, um, yes.
So I have another quick question for you, Rita, regarding our sales tax revenue.
Yes.
So I'm still learning all this stuff, but, uh, if we end up doing better than we're expecting, do we have to pass a supplemental budget? Or do we have to not collect that? If, if it ends up, do we have to somehow approve optimistic numbers hoping that we don't surpass that in, in growth and revenues or, or in, or else we have to, yeah.
Yes. Good question. So as far as Dole is concerned, they are concerned only with our expenditures, meaning whatever we approve for expenditure, we cannot go above what was budgeted, meaning by fund. Okay? So for the general fund, if I budgeted eight million in expenditures, it better not go above that. With revenue, that's, they don't care about that. However, I feel that, you know, we should try to, in other words, if revenue is a lot higher for sales tax in twenty twenty-three, we could do a supplemental budget because then what we would want to do is if it's just, let's just say it, five hundred thousand higher, we want to be able to take that five hundred and also spend it, right? So that would be the reason we would do a supplemental budget if for some reason revenue came in and it was way above what we had budgeted to be able to expand it, expense it as well.
I got you.
Yep.
Okay.
So really, I mean, again, trending so similar to twenty twenty-one, um, as of August, we, we will see if we're going to adjust that. But in prior years, obviously, and we'll talk about that when we get into the different funds. Sales tax had been, um, budgeted pretty conservatively. That's why we're always, this year and last year, been so much higher for actuals versus the budgeted amounts. Therefore, I'm saying, you know, let's go based upon twenty-one actuals. That gives us a better picture as far as what to budget for in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
So Rita, just thinking about the sales tax of revenue. We really can't, you know, mid, mid-year or Bob or in the, uh, in twenty twenty-three, we really can't predict what's gonna happen.
That is correct.
And so, uh, and so you're not saying that we would, um, we would, uh, adjust our budget, um, for an increase in sales tax when we really don't know what's gonna happen until the end of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Can you go to the next slide, please? So as I had mentioned, we have two different types of funds. We have the government funds and the proprietary funds. So the government funds, which include the general, general fund, the community center, and non-major funds are principally supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenues. Non-major funds include the conservation trust fund and the street fund. The general fund balances include funds that are reserved as follows. A hundred and ten thousand from the Boulder County Housing Authority for Thompson Village Development in lieu of dedication of land for public use and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars from the parking lease with Aldora, which was approved by the board so funds could be raised to be used for park improvements. So all these reserved funds from the government funds and the proprietary funds are held in separate accounts. So this hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars will not be spent unless the board provides directions to staff on how to fund, how to spend these funds. Next slide, please. So the town of Niddler maintains two proprietary funds, which are the water and sewer funds. And they are not your typical government funded by taxes type of programs and services. The idea is to pay for services provided through fees, which hasn't happened really. And we are having to use tax dollars and also have had substantial amount of grants as well as zero percent loans. I will talk more about how these reserves come about when we get into the sewer and fu- and water budget. So the net positions for the sewer and waterfront include reserves as follows. Three hundred and eight, three hundred and seven thousand for sewer infrastructure improvements and expansion and seven hundred and seventy-five thousand for water infrastructure improvements and expansion. All right, moving on to the general fund. So just for everyone's knowledge, this budget, um, does not include any possible revenue that will be decided during the eleven eight elections. It also does not include any computer replacements that Randy, our IT contractor, has recommended. Throughout this presentation, you will see highlighted in green, the twenty twenty-one budget versus actual figures for the change in net assets. And in yellow, you'll see the current change in net assets. Um, this might be helpful information when we look at the twenty twenty-three figures. Okay, so in looking at twenty twenty-one, let's go back, Miranda. You're way too fast. Like I said, this is, um, a lot of repeating, um, from last time, but I'll just go through it quickly. So what I think is important, as I'd mentioned last, uh, during last budget session is to look at twenty-one figures. In other words, we budgeted, um, a decrease, uh, in change in net assets of a hundred and fifty thousand and we increased the fund balance by two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And, um, that is an overall increase of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, we budgeted, um, a decrease of sixty thousand dollars, but increased our fund balance by two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So really, that's an overall increase to the fund balance between twenty-one and twenty twenty of four, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And the reason I think that's important is because as of right now, we are budgeting, as you can see, a change in net assets of, uh, decrease three hundred and thirty-three thousand and sixty-one dollars.
So, uh, hey Rita, um, twenty twenty is when we got hit with COVID and so there were a lot of, um, uh, we, 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 uh, reduced our expenditures.
That is correct.
Because we didn't know what was gonna, how it was gonna play out if we were going to, you know, what our sales tax revenue would be. So it's kind of a unique situation, um, as far as what happened in twenty twenty.
That is correct, but also we were very fortunate that we had an incredible year. We did not really lose sales tax. So in other words, we had a really great sales tax revenue, but you are correct. We obviously did reduce staff expenditure. So that's one reason, yes. But then really, you look at twenty-one, I just want to point that out. I mean, that's two hundred and ninety-five dollar, two hundred and ninety-five thousand increase to the fund balance.
Yeah, I think we actually, um, reduced wages and salaries for everyone.
Well, it's not we reduced, but if you think about it, other than town hall, really all other departments and maybe the community center as well, but have really not been fully staffed for quite some time. And I believe a lot of the savings definitely, um, that we're seeing or have seen is coming from that, the, you know, reduced expenditures and the personnel.
Okay, thanks.
Anyway, um, so really back to the twenty twenty-three budget. As you can see, um, we are budgeting, um, a decrease of three hundred and thirty-three thousand and what I wanted to say about that, we have a couple of unknowns, obviously the police department. Um, I had to budget at the highest as far as salaries, wages go, and also, um, health insurance is, is another big expenditure. And then also the unknown is we are, um, creating a new parks department. So those expenditures, a total of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine, you know, is another, oh, did I say, no, that's three hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three, excuse me. Um, that's another one that's a big unknown, um, for twenty twenty-three. That's it for general fund. As far as capital expenditures, um, we have separate slides for all those and we will be discussing that later in the presentation. Any questions on the general fund? If not, we'll move on to the community center. So the commuter center is operating in the black and, um, one of that, one of the reasons for that is, um, there will no longer in twenty twenty-three, they won't have the debt service. So, um, really don't have much more to add other than that, that they're doing well. And they also have capital expenses for twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, which we'll be talking about later in the presentation. Okay, the water fund. So looking at twenty-one, we budgeted, um, an increase to the change in net assets of seventy-one thousand and actual came in at two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So, um, obviously that's an increase of approximately two hundred and ten thousand. And, um, here is where I wanted to point out the PIF fees. If you go under other sources of cash and look at PIF fee, the difference between what's been budgeted, which was seventy-four thousand and twenty and what was, um, received, two hundred and fourteen thousand and fifty-eight, that is the difference between that gets put into that reserves, um, account that I had mentioned earlier. So that was an increase of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the water fund for, uh, this year. Um, looking at PIF fees, if you look at twenty twenty-three now, we have to decrease that by a hundred and three thousand. We decreased that to a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and twenty, which obviously affects the change in net assets. The reason for that is if you looked at your, um, at the September financials, um, we, let me see, I had it here. Hold on, hold on. Oh yeah. So as of September's financials, we have only received eighty-five thousand dollars and we budgeted for twenty twenty-two, two hundred and ten thousand. So after meeting with Miranda, we decided that we needed to adjust that revenue line item. Um, so the change in it asks for, it's for twenty twenty-three. As of right now is at seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eleven, a decrease to the fund balance, which has changed, as Miranda had mentioned, since our last budget meeting. We had to adjust the wages for the utility department because they use a separate salary structure, structure, excuse me. And that will be discussed later in this presentation. Next. So in the sewer fund, again, looking at twenty twenty-one first, change in net assets was, um, we budgeted a decrease of thirty-six thousand and the actuals came in at ninety thousand. That's an overall increase of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Quickly want to go to the PIF fees, um, under other sources of cash, we budgeted sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight and actual revenue was a hundred and twenty-five thousand and thirty. So the difference between the two, which is fifty-seven thousand, was added to the sewer reserved funds this year. And that's what makes up those totals I had discussed earlier under the restricted funds. Um,
Hi Rita, this is Billy. I'm about to come in the door, so don't be scared.
Are you walking in the door? Oh, okay. Good. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Um, so looking at really the operating, um, so hold on. So looking at the operating, operating budget, they are operating in the black, right? The sewer fund. So if you take revenue minus expenditures, you can see we're in the positive at seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, so however, once you add in, you know, um, the other sources of cash for four hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three, plus the debt service and the capital improvements, we end up, um, in a decrease in fund balance of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. There's also the change since our last budget meeting, just like it was in the water fund due to, um, salary structure adjustments for the utility department. Um, capital improvements, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, um, are similar to last year as far as the amount goes. We will be discussing that, um, under the CIP. You'll see the breakdown of what makes up that two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Next. So the street fund, as you know, was created to use on street repairs and it's obviously funded through sales tax. When looking at twenty twenty-one, you can see we budgeted, um, a decrease of sixty-two eighty-nine and actual came in at a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And really I wanted to point out total expenditures budgeted for twenty-one were a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. But really, all that was done or, um, expensed was thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. So really, this fund has been increasing over the years, the fund balance for, for the street fund. And therefore we are proposing to use a hundred thousand for asphalt and a half, a hundred thousand for road base, which that you'll see included is included in, under equipment and supplies. Um, and therefore that is the reason that you see a decrease in the change in net assets of a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Rita, uh, this is Tanya. Where do you guys want to put the asphalt down?
That is either an Emmett question or a Miranda.
Emmett's here, so I'd like, if Emmett wants to answer it.
Uh, yeah, this is Emmett of the streets department. I can speak to that. Um, yeah, there's various different areas in town that I feel need to be repaved. Um, South Jefferson Street being one of them, that road is currently paved and it's in a severe state of deterioration. Um, so I'd like to pursue the repaving. Is that?
Is that by, uh, Kathmandu and, uh, the Kathmandu Plaza? Is that what that is?
Uh, that's, I was gonna get to that as well. South Jefferson um, intersects one nineteen and it's, it's a part of Old Town and that's.
Okay, I guess I, I mean, sorry.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. Behind the Harvest House. That's a severe state of deterioration.
Was that paved already? That was already paved?
It's paved now, but it's in very poor shape.
Right. It doesn't look like it's paved. Got it.
Yeah. Also North Jefferson, that's the section, um, that runs in front of Kathmandu. That, you know, the majority of it is currently not paved and, uh, it's a constant source of frustration with the potholes and it gets so much traffic. I really think that needs to be repaved. So that would be one area I'd prioritize. And, and also the visitor center parking lot. In my eyes, those are the highest priorities.
I'm a little confused because I, isn't that whole grant for that sidewalk and all that? Isn't that gonna be part of that? The repaving and whatnot? You know, the sidewalk that goes to RTD.
The paving of the, the repaving of the, the parking lot itself is not included. Oh, sidewalk is for, or that grant is for sidewalks and the EV charger program only, although they're, they're.
Over a million dollars just for that little bit of sidewalk. Okay.
Yeah. The, I will say though, there has been a request, uh, by another trustee and we're gonna talk to the DDA to see what they can contribute towards the repaving of that area. Um, and so, but I think the ask would, I think, and Emmett, please jump in for me too, is, you know, still having these funds available, because even if it's not the visitor center parking lot, you know, we do have the funds sitting in the street fund. We should use them, right? We should use them other places if it's not the visitor center.
Well, that's true. There's like Third Street, which is coming up later in the conversation. Um, but I'm confused. It, it looks like it's negative a hundred and forty-five thousand after all. So I thought we had the money.
You do. So in other words, what you do is you take the fund beginning, beginning balance that was left at, um, the end of twenty twenty-one. That's my actual fund balance, two fifty-three, four ninety, right? I carry that forward. And so what I think also I wanted to add is.
Oh, I see. I see the, yeah. It's almost eighty thousand.
We want to, well, if we put it in there, the, the streets department can use it. If we don't budget for it, right? So they may or may not use.
Oh, you have to put in the budget or you can't use it unless you did come back and ask for a supplemental.
That's right. Exactly right. And you can see, we're still leaving a fund balance of, uh, projected fund.
That makes perfect sense to put it in there. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're good. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the conservation trust fund is a reg, is very regulated on how we can spend these funds. These funds have to be used for park and trails improvements and maintenance. Um, we, we did increase expenditures for twenty twenty-three to include unused fund balances from previous years. Therefore, just like with the street fund, we are showing a decrease of eleven thousand to the fund balance, which leaves us with a fund ending balance of three hundred, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So we receive about approximately sixteen thousand dollars of revenue per quarter. Um, and that's really all I have for this fund.
You know, you said that it gives us an end fund balance of three hundred and eighty-five, or thousand, but that's three hundred and eighty-five.
Dollars.
Dollars. Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Thanks.
Yes. I wish it were three hundred and eighty-five. So really basically, you know, the conservation trust fund. And again, we're, we haven't really, I don't know. I haven't spent much yet this year, but I think that is the plan. Um, again, you know, money comes in and it's supposed to be spent. And if not, Again, you know, money comes in and it's supposed to be spent, and if not. I think we should carry it over, if it hadn't been spent, we should increase it the next year to give them the opportunity to spend that money. Next slide. So the Health and Human Services Fund, basically, the twenty-three budget looks the same as the two thousand and twenty-two budget. And um, that is revenue coming in from the general fund. We transfer it from the general fund, revenue from the lodging occupation tax revenue. Gets transferred from the hu, um, general fund into this fund. And uh, the board decided last year um, that the approved appropriations. Ninety-nine percent going to the Health and Human Services Fund and one percent of revenue coming in. Uh, staying within the general fund for police services. Um, so basically, budgeting the same as last year, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty coming in. And then thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty being spent.
What's this fund actually used for, what do we spend the money on specifically, and the law enforcement, I guess is the main, well.
So, I mean, it's just, it's so tiny, excuse me.
You know, it sounds like law enforcement is a small percentage, so what are the other?
So the Health and Human, you wanna talk about that Miranda, it's for, we then turn around and, and send a check or write a check to the food bank, is that correct?
So the food pantry has a, a subcommittee that consists of various nonprofits. Uh, throughout the peak-to-peak that are part of the peak-to-peak Housing and Human Services. And so we provide them the funding and they actually handle the distribution. And so I know the funds have been used uh, for, to meet, you know, some of the needs of food pantry clients. I wish Katrina was on here, because what they'll do is they'll send you an end-of-year accounting. But it is for all things Health and Human Services that they deem appropriate. Um, and then they provide an annual review of how those funds were spent and you would receive that typically in December.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next slide. And I'm gonna ask, is Kate on and does she wanna?
Kate wasn't, it wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to make it, um, and if she joins, it will be later.
Okay, I can go ahead and talk about this then. So the DDA's operating budget is very similar to last year. Looking at the two thousand and twenty-one capital improvements, it looks like a lot. But really, when you look at it, we budgeted four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for capital improvements. And in actuality, spent seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one. The twenty-one budget change in net assets for twenty-one shows a decrease of two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six. I'm sorry. Actuals came in at three hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So really. For two thousand and twenty-three, um, they have budgeted uh, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth. Of TIF projects, and really, and it's so the change overall, change in nets, net assets is a decrease of thirty-four thousand and fifty. So really. Nothing has really changed as far as um, the way it works with, with the DDA. They would still come before you with any TIF projects and present it in an inform. Forma, in an informational item and explain to you what they're hoping to accomplish with TIF funds. Next, they would bring a resolution to you and you would then approve it, so really, um, and we'll talk about. Again, a separate slide, what all the different projects are that they are wanting to get done in two thousand and twenty-three with a separate slide.
Uh, Rita?
Yes.
Looking at the um, CIP projects for um, the DDA, many of those are not capital. And so I'm wondering if we should um, uh, make that apparent in the budget summary. And, and really what I think would be most beneficial for the Board of Trustees is to see a budget. Um, that's organized around the projects. So I just have those um, two comments.
So, Karen, are you talking about sort of like downtown beautification as not a capital improvement?
Well, that, that one is, is maybe um, could, you know, could be considered capital. I mean, if they're buying flower pots, um, there's a traffic control.
Right, and, and event, and event support and things like that.
Yeah, so I, I know, I talked to um, Kate this morning and they do have another. Um, form of a budget that shows where they track expenditures by project. And I think that would be a lot more beneficial for um, the Board of Trustees to see. Um, than this one, this one is like the TIF mon, money comes in and the TIF money goes out. And it would be better to see what projects um, are being funded by the TIF money. And then, end of year. Uh, what was spent for those projects and, and what was accomplished, and I did talk to Kate about that too, and she. She did say um, they will do an end-of-year report on their um, TIF projects.
So yeah, I, I do, obviously I have taken on this report, this, it's how it's been. And I wanted to in, explain how the non-TIF funding, just so everybody understands, because you're right, it's an in and an out, right? Because really, when, when the DDA um, is ready to um. Work on a project, they have to go out and ask for those funds, right? And so normally, what they've done, they've come to us, so what you're seeing, loan proceeds under non-TIF. The three hundred and eighty thousand would be if they've asked for all of those projects that they're wanting from a bank, from us. And then the capital, that is, the funds going out, transferring over to their TIF account, right? Once those have been approved, so it's an in and an out under non-TIF. But under the TIF, that's where you see debt service of three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty. If they would have done all those projects, it would have cost them that plus fifty dollars of interest per project. Um, maximum fifty dollar interest, I know this is confusing, the way this is set up. But um, I am actually not sure. How you would want that to look.
Well, I, it's, it's. This, this is just a different view of what they're doing, but. Um, but I guess I will point out that not all the TIF projects are capital projects. And I, and I guess that's all I want to point out.
Right, you think though, by having a separate slide that shows all the. Projects that are mentioned under this three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is sufficient? Or maybe just Kate supplying us with a different. You know, um, write-up or the different slide.
I wanna chime in here, because I was part of the budget talks for the DDA. Each project has a budget, and you could probably get Kate to just send you that. Because uh, you have, it's just like here, we have to budget everything, the money, or it has to come, be asked as a supplemental later. So if it's not in the budget, we can't spend it, they can't spend it, um. So their, each project is. Is very much broken down and how much money goes for each project. So I'm sure Kate has that, so you could probably get that. This is just different, because this is just like a huge budget of all of town expenditures. But if you wanted to get the DDA's specific breakdown of each project and how much money is allocated for each project. She has that, because we went through and we did that, we spent three days doing that or whatever. Every project, just like here, has a budget and you have to decide now, or you have to come back for a supplemental later. And so, Kate, I'm sure she'll give it to us if anybody wants it, but I, I don't necessarily think it's necessary for this.
Right.
Personally, because this is a big overview of everything, it'd be kinda like saying, I want Water to tell me everything they're doing and break it down. Per little project, that's not up here in here, you know, so. But what I was saying. If you wanted to have it more specific and broken down, that'd be great, but.
I'd love to see it more broken down.
It is available.
I think it's pretty different than Water, um, just because it's a bunch of money, that we don't know what's happening with it, and um. So, I love it and I wanna, I wanna thank Karen for starting the dialogue with Kate.
Just write Kate and have her send it.
Kate said she would um, send me a copy of that and um, maybe, maybe we can go from there. Like, I could make a proposal at that point on what, what um, what would be useful for the BOT.
So I did just wanna say again that under that um, CIP slide for the DDA. That you'll see later in the presentation, it is all broken down, what makes up that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And real, as far as this slide is concerned, I think it's important just for the budget figures of what the bottom line will look like. I think that's what this is helpful for, and then again, you know, if Kate has anything else more than what we're showing on a separate slide. Where we talk about the projects, then that would be great. Okay, I think that's it for me.
All right, my turn, um, so we just wanted to know one of the changes, and Rita already spoke to it. But I'd like to offer a little clarification on the utilities department. So we did have to adjust the salaries underwater and sewer, uh, because the way in which utilities operators are. And receive increases is different than any other department. Currently, we pay operators fifty dollars uh, an hour per cert. Uh, and looking at the number of certs that the current operators could get, we realized that we needed to make an adjustment. Because that flat four percent was not going to cover what is possible for them. Should they pursue all of the certifications within that timeframe that they're eligible to take. Um, what this means though, is at the end of the year, a utilities employee is only eligible for their two percent cost of living. Because every employee gets that, and they wouldn't receive a two percent merit. Because they have this separate salary structure in which they can receive increases under. Um, so that's why you do see a change there, are there any questions about that?
So they kind of earn their merit by achieving the certifications.
Yeah, you know, unlike any other department, they have certifications, right? So, you know, an employee can earn upwards to two dollars more an hour if they were to complete their certifications. And so, four percent didn't cover, was actually short, right, it would make them short. And so we, we made sure that we gave them all their two percent COLA and then assessed how many certs they could get next year. If they were to go for all of them and then budgeted accordingly based on what is possible. And how certifications work in utilities is, is it's time served, like time works, not a jail sentence. But time works in the, the department. So as you hit milestones, like when you hit your year, you're eligible for more courses. Um, their education is taken into consideration on when they're eligible to take certain exams. Um, but currently, the team is eligible to take all of their kind of entry exams, whether that's the small systems track. Or the wastewater, water D, water district, or distributions, collections fours. And then next year, they're all eligible for kind of that second route, excuse me, that second round of uh, certification. So, so long story short, we budgeted on the high end based on what Chris, Britt and Andrew could obtain, plus the new person. What they could obtain next year. Okay, so lots of things to discuss now, it's discussion time amongst the board.
Real quick question on, on utilities, have they come any closer, like is anyone interested in that fourth job?
Uh, no, I mean, we've had a lot of parks, so, so we've had some parks employees. Who, you know, Nikki has identified who she would like to pursue to fill the vacancy, and we've asked some of them if they were interested. I do have an interview though tomorrow with the utilities manager. So, so if all goes well, a utilities manager is only eligible to work with us. If they're six months away from having the certifications required to be in the ORC. So if it all works out with this, this applicant, what that would mean is that within six months, she would have all the certs to become ORC. We would end our contract with direct discharge and that would all be back in-house. Um, so I'm one step closer on that side of it, but utilities is technically a team of five. It's four operators, one utilities manager, and we're currently down two positions.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that, that manager position.
Um, I had some questions.
Yeah.
About the general. Because like, if you were concerned, that we're on this trend of going. In the red. That we can't, it's not sustainable, and so I was trying to figure out why. You know, why, where it's at, obviously the police is a big one. But what is administration and finance, why did that go up like eighty thousand or? I'm looking at, I'm comparing two thousand and twenty-one to now and the projected budget. So, you know, the administration finance is four forty-eight now, and it was three seventy-eight in two thousand and twenty-one, what's changed?
Back from the two thousand and twenty-one, actually.
Yeah, I'm just trying to compare like what back when we were doing good to how now where we're not. To be like, there's like three or four places, obviously police is a big one. This one's like eighty thousand, it's not big, but it's something, and I'm wondering what, what's changed, why has, what's. Serving a new, what does that even mean, administration finance?
Administration and finance, um, I would have to say part of that is wages that we did, just did the supplemental budget for.
Okay, so that, that salaries have gone up.
Yes, that would, that would be the one for the administration and finance. And um, obviously, yes, like you said, law enforcement is a given, the seventy-three thousand. And then we already talked about the parks, right?
Yeah, but even with that, okay, if I add that up, we're looking at like seven sixty, I, I'm doing this in my head, so it's not accurate. Seven sixty compared to the two of them together, five fifteen in two thousand and twenty-one.
Sure, so if you look at.
Difference here.
So, if you look at the operating um, difference, it's only forty-nine thousand, so you see that? That's the revenue minus expenditures, we're only in a deficit of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six in the general fund. So really, that's not bad, right?
Oh, it's not the yellow, the three thirty-three.
So what, what you then, so that's the operating difference, what you include then is the grant expenditures, which I wanted to say again. Granted, expenditures is an in and an out, that does not affect my change in net assets. But what we have, capital expenditures, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, right, that's big, that's much more, that's.
What's the, what's the capital expenditure in this particular?
I don't know by heart what all is in there, but we'll look at that um, on the CIPs. But that's really what's important here, it's really forty-nine thousand.
Okay, so in our general, but so then. The capital expenditure, I'm just concerned, because like we had such a nice cushion.
I understand, but that's why, you know, I, I, I understand, I mean, I don't like it either, but Miranda.
No, I know, nobody likes it, I'm just trying to figure out where.
I've cut this, but we've cut this budget down so.
I know, you told me, or told us in the last meeting, all the things.
And that's why I thought it's also important to just mention, you know, we have added to our fund balance over the past two years. Does that help? Sure, but, you know, and if there's any other way we could do this, um, you know.
No, there isn't, um. So, what, what is the capital expenditure, does anybody know, like, does that just mean like big, big purchases?
I can look at, I mean, I can look.
They're all your CIP projects and, and we reviewed these last time, sorry. It's all of these current CIP projects that we talked about.
Great, but then we wanna add the, we wanna add the computers to that and we wanna add.
Right, so we went over these slides, the current CIP projects, we have additional slides that we'd like to go over with you all and you can decide, you know.
Oh, okay.
Really, within these CIP projects, that's a lot of the discussion is like, are these, are we wanting to budget for these, you know? And, and so, there is more conversation to be held, but to Rita's point.
We need them all is the problem, you know, so.
Right, is, is these are all, sorry, everyone, close your eyes, these are all essential, you know. We feel that, we do feel we pulled everything back down to what is essential. Um, because this, this change in net assets was much larger than where we are today. And so we, Rita, I think we probably got two hundred thousand, if not more, in expenses to just get us here.
Right.
And, and also, one other thing I wanted to say is. This does not include any possible revenue, if anything passes, right, marijuana.
Yeah.
Um, the, whatever, the other one, that would go in the general fund, right? Yes, uh, the short-term rental, that would be part of the general fund only, so that would be helpful, but we cannot count on that, that's why I said upfront. This is the worst case, I think, right? Well, it'll get worse if we add computers or some of the other recommendations some board members have. And that's something to be aware of when we start discussing, you know, all these other recommendations.
But, it's not like the. But it's not like the capital expenditures will happen every year, so that's, that's good to know.
That's exactly right.
Because, you know, I'm like, we got two years of doing this before we're done.
And, and another thing is, right, and again, parks being a new department, it's, it's difficult, right? I mean, we're.
Yeah, it needs to figure out a way to generate revenue at some point.
That, and you know, revenue may be higher, that would be great, right? And maybe expenditures now, of course, a big part of the expenses there for parks is wages, no doubt.
Yeah, well, fair enough, I just.
Right.
So, okay, so thank you for answering the questions.
So I, uh, as far as the deficit in the general fund, uh, I believe that's more like eighty-three thousand, nine forty-six. Because uh, we're transferring out um, the occupation tax, which is thirty-four thousand, six fifty. And we're counting that as revenue. So I believe that the deficit there, the difference between operating expenses and non-grant um revenue is eighty-three, nine forty-six instead of forty-nine thousand, two ninety-six.
So what I had told Karen, and that's my belief, is revenue comes in for um occupation revenue in the general fund, so that's revenue. I then transfer it out to the Health and Human Services Fund. It's a transfer in over there and in the Health and Human Services Fund, it's an expenditure. So I personally did not think that it needs to be under operating difference, but listed separately as a transfer out. Meaning it's still, of course, reflected in the change in net assets. Um, that's just my opinion, so um. Yes, so if.
I mean, the net assets includes um, net assets is the uh, the fund balance. Is that what you're talking about?
The change in net assets is all revenue minus all expenditures.
Right, so that includes both capital expenditures and operating expenditures. And I, I think, um, so I just wanted to make that point about what I view. The um, difference between operating expenditures and uh revenue is actually in the general fund. Um, and then as far as the fund balance, um, you know, I, I, I personally, what uh, based on what I've seen other um in uh jurisdictions do, um, that a fund balance of uh, the, the non-restricted and non-reserved fund balance being at least two months of operating expenditures is what you want to have, um, in case there's some sort of catastrophe where you need to have some time to come up with a long-term um solution to, to um raising, raising funds. And we do have that in the general fund. Um, it's not much more than that. Um, but I, I personally, I'm not too concerned about the fund, the fund balance there. Um, I'm more concerned about the um operating expenses being greater than the non-grant revenue.
Karen, you said two months of operating expenses or two years?
Two months.
Two months?
Two months, uh, two months of the uh, non-restricted, non-reserved fund balance.
Okay, gotcha, sorry, you got a little crackly, so I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. And then Rita, you had said, you know, so Karen's point about that operational tax being counted up in the revenue. But what you're saying is that you are counting it up there, but then you are pulling it out and counting it over in the human services.
Correct, so for me, it's a transfer in and a transfer out, out of one fund into the other, right? I personally don't consider, because we're not spending it out of the general fund, right?
As an expense twice.
Right, so um, that is my under, the way I see it. But again, you know, I'm open to suggestions and that can be fixed, but um, that's just, I, I think this is just a better way of seeing it, and if, you know, if truly, you know, we could say, okay, it's forty-nine, two ninety-six plus the thirty-four, six fifty, but I feel it's important to leave it as a separate line item.
And, and, and I'm fine with that, um, but just to clarify with what Eric said, it's not being counted as um, an expense twice, it's being counted as a revenue twice.
See, I, I don't see it that way.
It's, it's being, it's being, it's, it's, it is still impacting the, the, the change in net assets though, so it is being counted in that sense, it's not being counted as an operating expenditure, because it's not actually being used as an operating expenditure in the general fund, so it wouldn't be particularly accurate to list it there uh, under operating difference. Because it's not actually do, it would not actually do anything operational in the general fund, it's only moving through it.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, I, I'm fine with not including it there, but I think that uh, we're spending um, eight, eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-six more than we have of the non-grant revenue, that's, that's just my, my point there. Um, and whether we include it in the operating difference, you know, that uh, it doesn't matter really to me, I think that's up to our um finance person Rita to decide how to do that.
Is this the use tax on the line three of the revenue?
No. Talking about occupation tax, it's a tran, transfer to from other funds.
Right above the yellow highlighted item, trustee.
Oh, I see.
But is it Rita, is it counted as revenue under other taxes and fees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct, so basically, again, I, I just don't know, I guess, I don't know how to explain myself any better. In the general fund, it's a revenue in and it's going out, uh, I'm not showing it as an operating expenditure.
You, you have that later, because you have the forty-nine thousand is above that, so.
I'm sorry?
Oh, no, I'm just, when I'm, when I read a graph, the forty-nine thousand that you say we're in deficit is above that thirty-four, so it shouldn't impact that number at all.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I agree, I think we all agree, Tanya, um, I think, I think Karen was trying to, was proposing that they should be added and that should just be the one number, but no, but that, yeah.
Rita's, I mean, I'm, I'm not an accountant, but I'm not seeing what Karen's seeing per se, but.
I'm with Rita's logic to me.
Yeah, if it's below it, that's how I read stuff, so um, it's not like above it, if it's above it, then I would.
Well, that's funny, see, the, the occupation tax is counted as revenue in the general fund. Um, and so with, it's, it's the uh, let's see, other taxes and fees, I think it's part of. Um, so it's revenue there. And then um, that money is not available for revenue in the general fund. So, so um, you know, so I'm saying that um, uh, we're counting it as being available. And then when we're calculating the operating difference, we're only taking the operating expenditures, not what we transfer out. Um, except for the pass-through, which we aren't doing anymore, because that was for the uh, ice drink. Um, so, uh, I mean, I, I, in my mind, you know, it's really a deficit of eighty-three thousand, nine forty-six. Not um, forty-nine, two ninety-six in the general fund.
But, but the deficit is actually two hundred and thirty-three thousand, sixty-one, and that is included in that. That's the real number and that is included in that, so I, I think counting it as a deficit under operation, operating expenses, when it's not an operating revenue, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
How it is here.
Yeah, I think it's good.
I, I do like to know what operating deficit or uh, you know, positive is, that's a, that's a useful number to know, uh, stripped kind of clean of all the other expenses that might be coming through, so I, I, I appreciate it this way, Rita.
Well, uh, but, um, uh, it, from my reading, it's typical to consider a fund balanced if the operating expenses are not greater than the non-grant revenue. And because if, if they are, and those are your day-to-day expenses, um, then you'll, you'll continue to draw down um, the reserves. Um, so it, you know, if, um, and, and so I, I think if we're looking to uh, to have a balanced budget, it doesn't, we're not really too concerned about what we're spending in savings, because that's what they say, the reserves is for, is to spend for capital improvements. But we're more concerned about the um, day-to-day operating expenses. Um, so that's why that number is important to me, um, to see that the, the budget's balanced.
I see what you're saying, I mean, there, it, it's, I think that there might be other things in revenue that are also allocated though to certain, to certain expenses and aren't necessarily fixed in the same way that this is, so. I see what you're saying though, uh, if we want to like just do a straight comparison of revenue to operating expenditures, we can't really do that uh, without that thirty-four thousand included, the way that it's laid out now.
There's nothing else in revenue like this.
Yeah, I see, I see.
I think, I think I'd like to just, um, I think it's a super interesting conversation and, and let's tag it as something, you know, that, that may need further discussion. And you know, maybe as we move through the rest of the summer, this will be answered, maybe not, but, but let's, we will, we will, we can and we'll come back to it. I do want to keep moving, though we have folks who are um, with us that um, have yet to get to. And we've been, we've been here for an hour, so let's, let's get through more slides.
Just a real quick clarifying question, Rita, when you've budgeted it out, the police expenditures, expenditures, and it was for the top dollar, like you had said for salary, are those also assuming that they're starting January one, all of those?
Absolutely.
Okay, so there is a realization here that not all of them are going to be starting January one, and it's going to be phased in. And so that forty-nine thousand could become very irrelevant within a couple of months.
Thank you for bringing that up, and again, even with the parks, I mean, again, the revenue piece, is it higher, is it not? So budgeting obviously is budgeting, you know, it's an estimate, so. But the PD alone, right, the, the salaries, are we gonna be at five hundred and five thousand, I can't remember, I think is what it is? Probably not.
Right, got it, thank you for clarifying.
And while I get to this discussion, thank you, uh, trustee Sterling, I think it's important to note though that it is appropriate to budget for full-year staffing. You know, I, I can't in good faith, you know, stagger them in, because who knows, a miracle could happen and we have them all. You know, I don't want to, you know, budget where, you know, I can't hire in February because they're not budgeted until March. And so it is in our best interest to still budget as if we have a full police department as of January one, knowing that the reality is not going to be that way.
Absolutely.
It's even more important for the next year's budget that we have it uh, fully laid out.
Yeah, and I appreciate the conservative view of that, of just assuming from day one, January one. I appreciate the conservative view, but I think the reality everyone to be aware of is that that forty-nine thousand, yeah, it gets, it's, it gets closer to the black, um, just knowing the reality of how hiring works, so, okay, got it, thank you.
And that's also, you know, I think other things is, you know, again, we're still short the two utilities positions and we're budgeting for one more streets person, which would take us some time to hire, so it's not just even police department, there's a few other departments that would be in similar positions.
Got it, thank you.
Awesome, just quickly, um, you know, possible revenue, you know, we can't forget that, but we will know that by our next budget meeting, obviously, if that is going to happen.
Okay, discussion time, let me just preface this really quick. The next eight slides are recommendations provided to town by trustees, minus the computer one, which we'll get to next. We are seeking input from the BOT on each of the slides, so we'd like to have a kind of a brief conversation about each one as we move forward. Any modifications that are agreed upon? So the additions of computers or servers or some of these large CIPs will obviously have an impact on the overall budget. And we would bring back those financial figures to the November fifteenth meeting.
Hey, some of our, some of our esteemed guests who are on this, going to be presenting during these eight slides? Or, or do they come after? I just want to make sure.
No, they are presenting during these eight slides, starting with Randy, so let me just go over this really quick. Really, the, the possibilities before you are to replace everything now, as, as recommended by Randy in the spreadsheet. Do a phased-in approach, maybe during two or three. And there are some trustees who are interested in understanding if a cloud-based server is an option. So I'd love to invite Randy to talk about the spreadsheet he provided and his recommendation for us.
First thing, um, we probably should note is it looks like the notes got out of sync with the rest of the spreadsheet when they wrapped, so.
Hey, hey, Randy.
Sorry, is it just me? Oh, thank you, we can't hear you.
Can you, can we somehow get your volume a little higher? I don't know, can barely hear you.
PC here, maybe I got the wrong device.
Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
So Randy, the trustees did receive the spreadsheet. The way it might be showing up in the packet might look funky, but they did receive the spreadsheet independent of the packet.
I'm trying to figure out where the mic setting is, I'm not a WebEx person.
Should be on the bottom, but I'm not, I'm in host mode. Not sure how.
So if you go to the button that says mute, unmute, there's the little arrow right to the right of it. That's where you can.
Audio connect, here we go, microphone.
And if you go down to audio settings, you can adjust your, both your speaker and your um, intake audio levels.
Yeah, it's right out. Well, let's see if I can reach my headset.
Oh, I think it's, it's coming through his headset.
I gotta, you can probably hear me now, um, I got a very short cable though, so it's a stretch. So anyway, um, everything on that spreadsheet, it's there because that item is seven years old or more or will be during twenty twenty-three. Uh, the seven-year point is kind of a head drop dead date for a computer these days. Back in the day, it used to be every two or three years, we figured we had to replace a computer, these days, we get about seven years, but at that point, they're showing their age and becoming a productivity problem. Um, now, some of the miss, the items on here, for instance, the volunteer computer at the community center, that is being eliminated, actually, I believe it already has. The utilities notebooks, most of them um, are used for a very limited purpose uh, for remote access to this data system. So, and if they were to die prematurely, my guess is we'd get, we'd get by, but we should perhaps plan on having to replace something if that happens. Um, other ones like utility billing, you know, that thing is almost nine years old now. Few others, they're, they're major concerns. Now, the servers, both servers are functioning very well. We don't tax them at all. But our warranty is up, so for the town hall server in December and for the PD next June, once that warranty is up, something breaks and we're searching the internet, buying parts on eBay, waiting for them to come in. And meanwhile, people are twiddling their thumbs, so that's a major concern. We, I did check, we have the option of extending the support warranty, but not the parts warranty. The parts is what we really need, typically, if something goes bad, we've already diagnosed it, we're calling support because we want a part. Uh, but you know, if, if we're not going to replace the servers, we should renew those warranties and they're pretty minimal, hundred and twenty-three bucks a year for up to two years. Um, of course, if the PD were to go away, we would save it, a big hunk of change there. It would be possible to host both servers on a single hardware platform. So current standard operating practice for servers is to uh, is to virtualize them. So you'll have a physical host and you'll have multiple virtual servers on that host. I think CBI might not be happy if we put the PD in the town hall on the same, uh, on the same platform. But um, you know, in a pinch, if one of the hardware platforms. But, um, you know, in a pinch, if one of the hardware platforms dies, that's, that's kind of the beauty of a virtualized environment.
When you say virtual, are you, are you, do you mean cloud-based? Is that just two ways of saying?
No, no, a virtual machine on a physical, local physical host. If you were a cloud-based, they would be virtual too, but, um, but, but it gives us the flexibility to host a virtual machine on another hardware platform if that physical machine were to fail. Um, so that's good. Um.
So I have.
I have a couple of questions. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I just wanna, uh, so I think that, um, I, I do think that some of this, maybe some of these should have been brought a few years ago as things that we need to replace and we need to, uh, be better, I think, about, uh, ranking and prioritizing these sorts of purchases and have plans in place for replacing, uh, computational, uh, resources, uh, on a, in, in, on a timely manner, right? Year on year, we should probably be doing these things rather than all at once. I think it's probably pretty bad practice to replace everything all at once, uh, because it means that, uh, a few years down the road, we're gonna have to replace everything all at once again. Uh, to me, I would like to see a ranked priority list, uh, that's based on, uh, operational need mixed with the age of the device. And I'd like to do this over a, a couple of years, uh, to, so that we can get back on track and have, uh, like a proper circulation of, of technology needs that, uh, you know, we had, we, we add to our, our budget year on year. That's the way that I'd like to see it done. I don't want to create a situation where we replace everything all at once now and then replace everything all at once again and hit the budget harder than we're expecting on, on another year. I think that that's probably not a good way to do it.
So if I can comment on that, back when Alicia, uh, was our town administrator, we made a decision to replace all new hardware, uh, at the five-year point. Year after year after year, we look at just what you're looking at now, budget shortfall. And so the cans get kicked down the road. So the things on this list were on last year's list, but were deferred. And that, that has happened every year. So, uh, I agree with, they think should be on a, a fixed rotational, uh, replacement schedule and we should stick to it. But budget realities always stick their ugly, uh, uh, figures in the works here when it comes to, uh, the trustees approving a budget. So that's why we're here where we're, where we're at now.
Yeah, I, I think the budget reality is we're gonna have to do a phased approach and, and, um, and I, I think a cloud-based, I definitely would say, I'm, I'm a big fan of those. I've been with two companies over the last decade plus. Everything's moved to the cloud. Um, we have all kinds of PII requirements and major utilities and it works great. Um, why, why don't we do more laptops and tablets? Is there a reason we have, you know, two thousand dollar, thousand dollars of, of, of a computer?
A laptop and a, uh, actually typically costs a little more than a desktop. But, uh, as I price them here, uh, and that's planning a switch to micro, uh, form factor from the towers that we've primarily got now, they're about the, about the same price. Uh, you get what you pay for. You can go buy a three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-dollar laptop.
Different, I guess.
On Amazon, but you're getting a three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-dollar laptop, uh, with no warranty to speak of.
Yeah, I do think. Thousand bucks, I can get a, a, a good Lenovo with all kinds of, uh, warranty and coverage and, you know, the company I work for, we're, we're all laptops. So yeah, it's, um, they do it per, personally. Yeah, I mean, I guess I have a different experience, but that's, that's just my, that's my recommendation is laptops and tablets given the operational needs.
It could also be buying power, uh, you know, in terms of how many we're buying at once. Randy, do we have access to discounts that, you know, for purchasing the equipment that we can?
Is that a question for me? Sorry, I, I'm using the, my headset for the microphone, but that muffles the audio.
That's okay. Yeah. So Randy, do we have access to discounts for purchasing this equipment? Or are we paying pretty much retail?
No, no, yes. I, I have, uh, Dell's best reseller discount. It typically runs around thirty-eight percent. My markup is seven and a half percent, so you get the difference. Um, when it comes to, uh, a server, I just bought a server for a client in Boulder. Uh, on top of that discount, I can register the opportunity with Dell and save a few more thousand, and that gets passed on as well.
Okay.
And so I just sold a, a server that was over forty-two thousand list price for sixteen thousand.
Well, then I need to come to you for when my company needs to buy some equipment. Um, how about the moving to the cloud-based server? Like, have you kind of assessed what the cost would be?
Yeah, so two, two things there.
Yeah.
Um, a few years back, uh, the BOT was pushing to move to the cloud. And I thought, well, I better prepare for this in case we're forced to go there. And so I got, uh, an Azure server of my own. I, you know, set it up, replicated my active directory to it. Never got so far as, uh, as uploading my data and synchronizing it, uh, because I didn't need that. But if I had, had the cost would have been catastrophic. As it was, it was, I was paying, uh, just from my active directory server, twenty-two-hundred dollars a year. Um, if I were, you know, if I were, had moved my data there and I had a lot of users accessing that data, the cloud providers nickel and dime you for every aspect of your, uh, of your connection there. Every byte that travels over the wire, you're getting charged for, and it would add up in a big hurry. The other thing, even, uh, it'll be more expensive actually in the long run than our, um, than our local servers. The other thing, and it's even more important, is we have a total of thirty megabits of internet bandwidth. Thirty megabits. So if we want to go back twenty years, uh, in the speed of our computing connection, yeah, we can go there, but that is not sufficient for what we need to do. So you also have to factor in an internet service upgrade. You can figure at least six hundred a month there. So when you add the cost of the virtualized server and the, the cost of your internet bandwidth increase, you're up ten thousand or more a year.
Yeah, which is why a lot of companies are going hybrid instead of fully cloud now.
Yeah, a lot of folks are pulling back, you know, from the headlong rush to the cloud. Um, folks are hybridizing, like you say, or, or even going back to a local, a local thing. Another aspect, uh, you know, with these large providers, support is India. And there is nothing more, more frustrating than dealing with people who, you know, you can't quite communicate with. I got super frustrated, uh, with my cloud experience with Microsoft. It, it took weeks to get questions answered. Um, they, they just kind of didn't get what I was asking. Um, you know, we, we kind of go in circles. So th- that's, that's another thing with our Dell, um, computers. We pay a little more to get US-based support and it's worth every penny of it.
And Randy, in that two thousand dollars that you have listed here, doesn't that also include your time?
Yes.
Okay.
That includes the setup, which can vary a lot, you know, uh, usually it's, it's, uh, maybe a couple hours a machine, set up the machine, bring it up to date, optimize it for the user, transfer their use, their profiles, their browser profiles, their data, their, you know, the drive mappings, everything like that over. Uh, if somebody's been storing a whole bunch of stuff locally, it, it can, it could take a lot longer, but typically a couple hours.
So this price does include, uh, Dell support?
Oh, yes.
And that's for what?
And these are with, those are with three-year warranties.
Three years.
You can go out, uh, you know, you can go out as far as seven with Dell.
Yeah.
Uh, on a server, uh, uh, in fact, the servers are, are priced with seven-year warranties. Uh, it's, it's much cheaper to get it upfront than it is to add a year of time as you go down the road.
Randy, um, do you, is there any risk of your applications not being able to run on these older computers? I, my laptop is eight years old and I'm fine.
Okay, so thanks for bringing that up. So, um, some of these, you see that they have Office twenty-thirteen on them. Those, that needs to come off in April because it'll no longer be supported and it'll be a security threat. Um, now some of those are utilities notebooks and maybe we can get by without Office on them. That'll have to be discussed. But any, um, anything in regular use that the user needs Office will need to, uh, if we don't replace the computer, we need to, um, spend two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, or so for a, uh, an Office license.
And that's also not been budgeted, correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So I think ultimately for us as staff, we need to know what you're directing us because of, of course, these figures are not in the budget. It's, it's sounding, I mean, just on trustee Coombs' smile, that maybe it's a phased in. We look at, we, two or three this year, two or three next year, you know, and so on. And, and you want us to identify priorities, but I realize that's only one trustee who's said that. So I don't know if there is support for that.
I support that. Totally.
Given to go, uh, more, more granular, Miranda is the, on priority, like I think priority one needs to be what are legal obligations? Uh, whether it's PD and storing, you know, uh, body cam information or it's security reasons that we need to upgrade technology for. So whatever our legal obligations, I think, need to come first and should be our highest priority. And then down from there, uh, in, in order of how old the machine is versus, uh, the, the, the need that, uh, staff have for it. And I'd like to see that list and maybe look at, uh, replacing all of those machines within the next two years is how I'd like to see it done.
So, uh, so I, you know, I, I don't have visibility into, uh, would this be, this would be capital or? It would be, wouldn't it? Um, so I don't really have visibility into what all of our capital expenditures are in order to prioritize, um, the computers and servers with the other expenditures. Um, uh, from what Randy had said, it sounds like it's like, uh, and what Eric said, for legal reasons, we need to upgrade some of these. Um, so I, I would, um, yeah. I, I would prioritize this along with all of our other capital expenditures, but I don't have visibility into that. I did want to make a comment though, that, um, I was under the impression capital improvements would be five thousand dollars and higher. So, um, which I guess, you know, I don't know, is it two thousand per computer? Yes, and the general fund that might add up to more than five thousand. Certainly the server would be, right? I would put that as capital improvement. Not sure if I necessarily would use a two-thousand-dollar computer as a capital improvement. And then also as far as servers go, I personally think, you know, this, the server for the PD can wait because that's an unknown. We just still don't know what's gonna happen next year. Maybe we could pull that one along another year. And then really it's the server for town hall that needs to be discussed further.
And another option too here, and I've done this for a couple of customers who, uh, have let their warranties expire uh, and are kicking their servers down the road, uh, is to buy spare parts. And just in anticipation of something possibly failing. Now that's a, you know, it's a guessing game. Um, pick up a, put extra power supply and a hard drive and, you know, where do you stop? Uh, motherboard, RAID controller, but that's another possible approach.
Randy, are our, are all the drives in the servers the same age as the servers themselves or have they been replaced at some point?
These servers, um, haven't had any failures with the possible ex, possible exception of a power supply, but I don't think those have failed either. They have redundant power supplies. Uh, everything is redundant, uh, except of course the motherboard.
So I think what we'll do is we'll take this offline, we'll work with Randy. Um, for the, our third work session, we'd like to, of course, plug in the financial figures though. So we'll come back to you with that recommendation and the figures in the budget itself.
Great. Could you, uh, by chance, also just bring back the kind of multi-year plan? So that it's on the record in the next meeting, so that next time when this comes around, if there's an, if there are new people on the BOT or whatever, they, they'll know this is something that was planned to be purchased, you know, a year ago, two years ago. And so we don't have this problem again, moving forward of kicking these cans down the road and then ending up with a pile of computers that need to be replaced.
Right. Yeah, and you'd mentioned over two years. I mean, that sounds good, but maybe let's have a three-year plan too, in case that's just financially where we're at. Um, but yeah, that's, I appreciate what you just said about being clear for the multiple years of the plan so that we pick it up next year.
Keep in mind that, uh, additional computers will reach this threshold over the next two or three years.
Yeah, yeah. No, yeah. They're all pretty much dead on seven years already.
I mean, if we, if we see that on the plan too, I think that will be good for posterity.
All right. Well, thanks, Randy. We'll bring this back.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
So there was a desire to discuss, um, some possible revenue sources, although Mayor Billy, I do want to be mindful of our other guests. Would you be open if I jump into?
Let's prioritize.
We're gonna come back to these slides. I'd like to talk about the CIPs here. So we have some other guests here, Heather and Michelle from Boulder County Housing Authority and Ted, who is the engineer, as well as Nathan from JBA. They joined us, uh, because the board trustee had asked that we had experts on the call who could talk about the drainage on Third Street, which is the Beaver Creek Storm Proposal. And so I don't know if you'd like Heather, Michelle to jump into what they've viewed as the, as the need or how, where you'd like to start, Mayor Billy, but they are here as experts to answer questions.
Yeah, that'd be great if you guys could give us more specifics on this whole project. So issuing this project.
And, and the, the history too, I think, how, how we got to where we are right now.
Very good. Yes.
I, I'm hoping you guys can hear me on my speakers tonight. This is a new platform for me. I'm Michelle Alexander.
Sound great.
How are you guys doing?
Good. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having us. We recognize that you have a lot of projects and financial requests before you and we're all presenting to our boards this time of the year. BCHA is requesting that this board consider a drainage or paving project on the Third Street. BCHA owns and manages the affordable housing located there at one forty and one sixty East Third Street, where we have, um, a significant drainage problem that affects not only our property, but our neighboring properties as well. And as mentioned, we've been working with an engineer and the town of Netherlands and Nathan for a solution on this issue. The issue is that the drainage sits at the bottom of his property and we're unable to change the grade because it sits in the floodway. And then it flows downhill affecting our neighbors', um, foundations. And Ted, do you want to give more detail on the technical drainage issues that are going on here?
Sure. I'm, uh, Ted Barella with Farnsworth Group and, uh, I'm working with Boulder County Housing Authority. And, uh, as Michelle mentioned, um, the property has, uh, some significant drainage issues, uh, being in a low area, kind of on the, the easterly part of the, the property. And, uh, as she mentioned, um, it's not only impacting Boulder County Housing's property, but, uh, the neighbor to the east and I believe to the south. Um, there's really no way for the, the surface drainage to outfall or run off the site. Uh, there's no formal channel conveyance. So what happens is in significant rain, well, I guess not even, not even significant rainfall events, but even minor rainfall events. It, it appears that the water accumulates kind of at the low end of the site on the easterly, uh, part of the property, um, with no outlet. And so they, um, asked us, Farnsworth Group, to come take a look. And we put a concept site plan together or a concept utility plan, uh, came up with a solution, um, which, you know, ideally you would like to try to grade the site, uh, so that we could get surface flow. That would be the least impact. Um, but that, that will not solve the problem. Um, the grade is too severe, um, in relation to Third Street. Third Street sets up above, uh, generally speaking, uh, the property. And, uh, there's an entrance to. And, uh, there's an entrance to the west and an entrance to the east. And it, it looks as though, we haven't done a survey yet, but we did pull some, some, uh, some mapping, showing contours of, of Third Street as well as the Boulder County Housing Authority property. And, and just a field visit as well with, with Heather. It looks as though flow, uh, drain, it's surface runoff from Third Street. You know, flows from west to east and then, uh, it, it looks like it's diverted on the westerly entrance to the property uh, and into the property, and then also somewhat on the easterly entrance. So, there's runoff coming obviously from the build, the roofs of the buildings. I think there's three units there. And then, you know, um, just the property itself, but I think the Third Street drainage is contributing to it as well. So we put a concept, uh, drainage plan together, ran that by Nathan, um, as well as I think he worked with Emmett to, um, to coordinate that. And it sounds like we're all on the same page. This has occurred over the last, uh, couple of months or so. So we think we have a plan. It's just a matter of, um, you know, uh, the town's involvement and of course Boulder County Housing Authority. Basically what we've looked at is, um, putting in some storm sewer system, uh, a catch basin at the base of, um, the property on the east side, uh, with a storm pipe out to Third Street, which is really our only, um, location to take the, the runoff. And then we would, uh, we would propose storm sewer pipe and inlets in Third Street, kind of in the, in the Third Street right of way. And then, um, that pipe from the Boulder County Housing Authority would be connected to storm sewer pipe in Third Street. And then ultimately conveyed further downstream where the, where the grade drops off, where we can daylight a pipe into the roadside ditch, um, on the north side of Third Street. And I believe, I'm not sure who put the cost together, uh, for that seventy-five thousand six hundred. But it, when I looked at it, it, uh, it looked as though it included everything that we had, um, put together in that concept, uh, drainage plan. You know, the storm sewer pipe in Third Street as well as, um, the inlet and pipe on the Boulder County Housing Authority. Nathan, do you know who put that estimate together?
Yeah, that was actually Emmett.
Okay, Emmett did. Okay. And it looks like Emmett's on the call, but Emmett, when I looked at it, it, it appears as though you included, uh, you know, all the infrastructure that was on that concept, uh, utility plan.
Yes, that's correct. Um, that was a rough estimate, uh, based on the plans that were provided.
Yeah.
All inclusive.
Yep.
Including what's in outright of way and also on Boulder County Community Housing's property.
Yeah. And, and that, I looked at those quantities and, uh, that's what I, that's what I, uh, thought as well. And, uh, I mentioned that to Heather, um, previously. So thanks for providing that. So basically in a nutshell, that, that's pretty much it. I don't know if, um, did you, Heather, Michelle, did you want me to share that concept site plan, um, utility plan to the, to the board here? Or have they already seen that? Or do we even need to look at that?
If they'd like to see it, I def, um, we can bring that up.
I believe we have seen it.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe it was in the packet.
It is.
So how, how long has this prop, um, drainage problem existed? Has it always been there since the, um, development was put in, or is it a new, new problem, um, that we're seeing?
So it's always been there since, uh, we purchased this property. For several years, it was solved by trucks and shovels and staff just up there once a year filling in the hole. And then after the two thousand thirteen floods, it became significantly worse. And there, we can't change that grade any longer. And that's why we're looking at a permanent solution to the grading of this entire block.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, at least one of the emails I read from one of the neighbors to make it sound like this didn't exist before this housing, um, project went in. I'm kind of curious about that kind of history. I don't know, you know, who, who holds that history, whether it's your dad, Emmett, or, or, you know, or who, but you know, I just kind of curious.
I actually want to invite Don. It sounds like Don, if you're comfortable, maybe Don has a little bit of, of a history and
Great.
Prior concerns about this. Don, are you comfortable sharing?
Yeah. So, um, I hate to, uh, um, I don't want to be negative Nellie here, but the county was told when they were first investigating that site, anyone who's lived here, any amount of time knows that that site was a wetland for years, that field would flood. And there would be standing water, not just like a little bit, not a couple inches, like a foot. The, like the entire way. It was, it's, it's flood plain. And they were told not to build there and that it was an issue. Oh, no, no, we can handle that. We do this all the time. We can, we can, you know, offset that. So, um, that is not my area of expertise, however.
Are we all talking about the same property and Beaver Creek and not Tunston Village?
We're talking about Tunston Village, correct?
This property is Beaver Creek. Forty through one sixty on East Third Street, and it was built in nineteen eighty-four.
It's like near the post office.
We're talking about the Prime Haven property?
No, it's Beaver Creek.
No, Prime Haven, the, put that down.
No, huh?
I mean, it's in second, right?
Prime Haven is on Second Street. Is that what we're talking about?
Talking, no, it's, no, one, one block north, about halfway down, you know, on Third Street on your way, kind of coming around the backside to the post office. There's a bunch of, that's what we're talking about. And
Oh, the Beaver Creek apartments. Okay. I thought we were talking about Tunston.
Yeah. But thank you.
On West, I thought we were talking about Western. Okay. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. Here, um, he's, I guess he's third, um, but the, um, but, but I, actually, even if I, it could, maybe it's not East Third. I don't know why it's Third. Um, but, um, it's about as far east as you could go on Third, but, uh, there, I know a neighbor to the, on Second had said, you know, prior to this development being built, there was no issue that there, you know, the, like the neighbors to the south that are having a problem didn't before. So that, that's the kind of history I'd like to understand more when we talk about who's going to pay for what.
Well, I mean, regardless, the streets needs to have proper drainages and culverts like we did on Second Street. That's our responsibility, you know, we can't just let water flow down people's driveways and not have proper drainages and not have the road graded properly into those drainages. Uh, and then they might have some responsibility on their property for where it goes from there, but, um, that road could use some TLC, that's for sure. If the water's just running down the road without any direction, and if, if that's the case, then we need to give it direction. That's our job.
But, but is that the complaint?
Well, yeah, they, I don't know. I think the complaint is it's running down the road into their driveway because the water is not being directed into culverts.
Correct. The water, the water is starting at the top of Third Street. And if you, if you drive down Third Street, you will actually see the, um, the divots in the road, uh, where the water has curved around off of Third and then into our parking lot, because it's the first major lot on that street going down the hill.
And the water needs to go in a culvert and it needs to go directed somewhere where we take water. Not that, that needs to happen, you know, that needs to happen in every street that we own. So it, I certainly don't see this as being like necessarily the fault that this building was built there when the water is coming from above it. Now, anything that comes from there onto their neighbors needs to get mitigated. That's, that's different, but my other, my question is can this be paid through the street fund, uh, since there's, it seems to be like about this much left over on it? And not put in our budget and put it on that street fund. That's what I would prefer.
Um, well, I'd, I'd be willing to speak to this. Um, I mean, I, I think it probably needs to be between, and, and Boulder County Community Housing. I mean, that, that is a large chunk of money to be allocated to one project. And I mean, some of that quote did come from infrastructure that would be placed in towns right of way. But some of that would also be on, on Boulder County Community Housing's property. So, I mean, I, I think it should be a joint effort. And there should be more discussion between the town and Boulder County Community Housing before that amount of money could, can be committed to a project.
Yeah, I, I totally agree that, and I think they were willing to split that in the last meeting. We had, um, the cost. Because yeah, obviously anything on their property is their problem to a degree, you know, but
Right.
What's above it, it's ours.
We've slated funding for this year and for next year in our SIP planning to address the issues on our property.
So does the seventy-five thousand six hundred include issues, um, just on Third Street or also onto the county, you know, the Boulder County Beaver Creek property?
Yeah, that, that, that quote was generated based off of the plans that were provided to me, which included infrastructure on Boulder County Housing's property and in, in town right of way. So that's all inclusive, but I think, I think the right thing to do would be to split that cost and make a, a joint effort, if that's what's going to happen.
Well, it sounds like BCHA is already budgeted to, to, to do the part that's on their property. And I'm just wondering, can we get a ballpark, park figure on what that is and what we would be subtracting from the seventy-five thousand?
So for our, for our project cost this year, we had projected, uh, about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars to fix the drainage on this property. And then I believe Emma is the one that proposed the budget that was based on the engineer plans. And that also looked to be about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for the work that was being called out on this property.
So we would, we would be looking basically at a fifty thousand dollar project then, uh, to fix the problems on towns right of way.
That's, that sounds like it's probably not far off. I think it could be subject to change.
Sure.
But yeah.
Yeah. I was going to say, this is Ted with Farnsworth Group. I, I was looking at Emmett's numbers and there's about four hundred and fifty feet of, of storm pipe and inlets, proposed for Third Street and about a hundred and ten feet roughly plus or minus of, uh, storm pipe on Boulder County Housing Authority's property. So like Heather mentioned, I was just kind of proportioning it out, Emmett, based on your total numbers. And, uh, like Heather said, it, it, it looks to be about fifty thousand of, of storm pipe improvements in Third Street and maybe, uh, twenty or so, uh, roughly on Boulder County Housing Authority's property. Um, one thing I was going to mention is, does the town have any future, uh, plans to, to make improvements to, to the Third Street, uh, right of way, the street section with pavement? Uh, I know that, I mean, I know what we're talking here is really just storm sewer infrastructure. But ideally, um, I, I know you guys had improvements, uh, on Second Street, uh, some time ago. Is, is there any plan for similar improvements along Third Street in the future?
Could, could I just ask Miranda if there's anything off the top of her head in the MIP about that particularly?
So Nathan, actually Nathan's here. Now I don't have the MIP in front of him, Nathan.
Yeah, I could speak to that. Um, I, honestly, at, at this time, you know, there hasn't been anything allocated towards Third Street in terms of, um, improving the right of way. But I do agree, I think, you know, in general, um, there are some drainage concerns along, along the roadway that could be addressed. And, you know, I think, you know, once, you know, if a storm system is installed, and I think there is still some, some room for research here to figure out what is the best solution. We haven't looked at and researched all options available in this area. But, um, if it does become a, like an infrastructure type project where we are putting in a new storm system, um, that Boulder County can then connect to, that would be one solution. Um, there, there's also, you know, as you guys can probably tell, um, a lot of places in the town just don't have really established ditches or swales along the roadway where the drainage collects. So, you know, that's another thing we'd want to look up, you know, upstream of the area too. And, you know, maybe there's some room to mitigate some of these issues upstream, um, prior to having, you know, all the drainage going on to this property. So I, I do think there's some room for, um, you know, s- some more, uh, design and, and kind of, uh, drainage considerations in this area. And, um, yeah, hopefully we can find a way to kind of tie this all together and, and fix the problem because obviously, again, this isn't far from the floodway. Um, it's kind of right on the edge and it, it does, you know, it does limit Boulder County in terms of what they can do on their property. And so it, it is kind of a shared effort here to make sure that, um, you know, if, if Boulder County decides to discharge water off their property, it, it then affects other, uh, members of the community as well. So, um, it's something we'd want to take into consideration.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, those are all good points, Nathan. What, the reason I ask, and you probably know, is, is the, the plan that, uh, the concept that we put together, you're right, it's, it's one, uh, concept. And the numbers Emmett put together, I believe, is just for the storm infrastructure. Ideally, um, because Third Street is gra, you know, gravel, um, we would, we were proposing a, a catch basin kind of up near that easterly entrance before it, uh, is diverted onto the Boulder County Housing Authority property. Um, and then also one near that, uh, easterly entrance. It, and I think, you, you know, I, it, it will work, um, from a drainage conveyance standpoint. But ideally anytime you have storm sewer system, pavement, curbing gutter, that type of thing will, you, you, you know, would be ideal just because, um, with those catch basins, you, you know, and the silt, um, and the runoff that, you, you know, comes off the gravel surface, you're going to get stones and sediment that's transported, uh, downstream. And, you know, where, wherever we daylight that pipe, it's just going to be a routine maintenance that the town will probably have to put in their budget if we don't pave it. If we just put the storm sewer system in without any curbing gutter or pavement, that might be something the town just thinks about for future, um, you know, just, just the maintenance of, um, of, uh, the storm system if it's put in without a, a formal street section with pavement and curbing gutter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, uh, pavement or curving gutter coming anytime soon on Third Street. There are too many other priority locations. But, uh, I, I also, you know, just looking at Third Street, it's completely flat, right? There's not, there's no ditch, uh, at all on the, uh, south side of that, of that, of that dirt road. So it's essentially just a water slide, uh, jumping into these properties. So if we could, um, come up with a overall strategy for Third Street that didn't include paving that addressed other drainage problems, uh, in a more holistic way. And then we executed a portion of that project in order to solve this, uh, you know, urgent need with a sort of fifty thousand dollar project. To me, that's what, that would be the most logical way of going about this.
Oh, I have a, I have a question. I'm wondering where this project fits in with other, um, street and drainage needs in town. I know there is an issue with drainage on West Spring Street. Is, which one is, is, has a higher priority? Or have we even prioritized our maintenance, um, projects for streets?
I mean, there's also a drainage problem on, uh, Big Springs, right? So it's, they're, they're everywhere and lots of properties are being affected. I do thi, I do agree Karen, that we should have a priority list that we can all reference pretty much, uh, at any point that we want to. Uh, I haven't seen one, if there is one.
So Nathan, Emmett and I are meeting on Friday to look at the MIP that would include streets needs and then the goal That would include streets needs and then the goal being to bring that back to the Board of Trustees in time for your November fifteenth. Meeting for initial discussion and, and Nathan, you know, I think a- at that point, we could help to better prioritize. This and give a recommendation on where this project falls amongst others. Would you agree, Nathan and Emmett?
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, Emmett and I met, uh, about, about a month ago and. And, uh, you know, at least I walked through with Emmett, you know, the various, um, efforts that the town has already. You know, basically identified as, you know, needs to be improved and we, we do have, um. A priority list and obviously that's gonna be a living and breathing priority list. Things will change. Storm events and, you know, various, you know, weather events are gonna change those priorities. Obviously, you know, there's. There's issues all throughout town and typically due to, you know, a, a lot of the areas that are unpaved gravel roads. Um, we just see a lot of sediment runoff weather from, um, you know. Runoff, um, you know, moving sediment down line or even just the wind, the, you know, the wind moves. Um, a lot of, uh, dust and soils as well. So, um, we, we do have something prepared and, and, yeah, I think, uh. Yeah, after Friday, we'll be able to kind of refine that and really put. Um, a good priority system towards all of the areas that have been identified. And again, most of these areas are areas that have been. You know, i- i- I don't know, maybe received the most, you know, the highest level of complaints. Um, or that the town has to consistently go back to, to improve. So. You know, we're trying to find the path of least resistance, you know, with the budget that's available to basically. Um, fix the areas that, um, are reoccurring costs to the town. So that we're not just, you know, burning money every single year, you know. Think, you know, repairing something when it could be, uh, fixed, uh, permanently. So. Yeah, we will be meeting Friday and, and, and we will, um, kind of review that priority list and, and certainly add this to, um. Uh, the list to discuss in the future.
That's great. Thank you.
The one big project we don't have is finishing. Finishing paving Big Springs isn't in this budget, right? So.
Well, there's a hundred thousand dollars set aside for paving in the streets. And if that DDA helps to support with the areas, uh, Emmett previously identified, that could free up. Some funds for Emmett to, but I don't know, Emmett, you know, if you, and please chime in. About Big Springs in comparison to other areas if you were to prioritize paving.
Um, yeah, I mean, as far as Big Springs goes, it's. Paving Big Springs is not a priority for me. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem realistic to me. I mean, once. Once we begin to pave Big Springs, I mean. Where do you stop? And I, I don't think it's a realistic goal to pave all of Big Springs. So while you could pave. Small sections, I mean, it seems like a drop in the bucket. That's. Not, not going to make a, a large difference. Um, unless you do all of it, which I don't think is realistic.
Uh, Emmett. And Nathan, I'm wondering when you're prioritizing, um, maintenance for streets, if you're looking at. Um, the, the usage of the streets, you know, and how much traffic we get on them and. And making that a, a one of your factors.
Yeah, it would seem like that's, that is one dynamic of Big Springs. It's an artery.
Yeah, and, and.
It's almost entirely paved already. Um, so I'm a bit confused. There's only a small section left.
Yeah, I mean, Bi- Big Springs Drive is nearly entirely paved. There's probably.
I didn't mean the neighborhood, Big Springs.
That's what I meant, sorry. Yeah, I just, the main artery.
I see, yeah, there's probably only a tenth of a mile of Big Springs Drive that's still unpaved. And that could be prioritized for that to be paved, um. Like, like I said, I, I don't think it would make that large of a difference to pave that small section. But it could be considered, not, I mean, I've already conducted traffic studies. On that road and it does get a high volume of traffic.
My thinking is that it also saves on dust suppression, which we have been, you know, implementing in that section. So. We wouldn't need to do it anymore if we had paved it.
Jesse, Jesse, could you say it again? We couldn't hear you.
I would support paving the rest of Big Springs Drive.
Yeah, I would too.
But yeah, that makes sense. If the DDO chips in for the parking lot, uh, that maybe, maybe some of that could be reallocated. I really like. Tanya's idea of using the Streets Fund to do this project. If we, if we determine that it is in fact, uh, a Priority One project for next year. So we'll have to wait and, and get staff feedback on that, I guess.
Okay, so we'll.
We lost you, Miranda. We lost you, Miranda. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I'm just gonna go ahead and, um, I'd like to pick another, um, actually, is there Nathan and, um. Um, sh- um, sorry, Michelle and Ted, anything else on this project? That, or Heather, that you'd like to share, um, before we move on?
No, I, I don't have anything else. Um, just thank you all for, for the time and, uh, considering this, uh, for Boulder County Housing Authority.
Thanks, Peter. Sorry we made you wait through the first hour.
Oh, no worries. All interesting.
Same for me, Heather. I've had good interactions with everybody at the town. They've been very helpful. Um, so Nathan. Um, Emmett, uh, the time that we spent on all of this, all the ladies in the office. So, um, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. Um, I'm wondering, um. Who, who are our guests here? And, um, I see there's. I, I know we'll get Miranda shortly and she's got things a little more, um, she's texting me to organize those two who's next, but, um. I'm wondering if. Uh, just give me a second.
I'm back. It's, I think you all lost me. It's Miranda. I'm back.
Great, okay.
I don't, did we recap that? I had offered a proposal, but I don't know if anyone heard it.
No, you were starting to and then you broke up. Um, and so, and so we. You wanna go ahead and just state it so that we hear it and then we can move on to another, um, thing that involves some more guests?
Yeah, uh, this is our last guest item. So my recommendation was, I will sit, we'll sit down, uh, Emmett, Nathan and I on Friday. Talk through, you know, this drainage project as it relates to other priorities. We'll then reconnect with Heather, Michelle and Ted. Hopefully next week is my thought for the three of you. And then come back to the Board of Trustees with where we land on, uh, MIP priorities plus this project at the fifteenth. November fifteenth meeting.
That sounds great.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the last of our guests, but I thought maybe while we were on this slide, let's, I thought maybe we could do these slides and then roll back to revenue. Um, so let me just jump into the next two bullet points. I'm gonna combine them here. Trustee Severs had asked us to look into what it might cost for the street's equipment replacement. Um, Emmett did pull some estimates are in the packet, so thank you, Emmett, for that. What we identified is it's three hundred and fifty thousand to replace a backhoe, front end loader, grader and excavator. And that's if you were gonna go used. It's nine hundred ninety-five thousand if we were gonna go new. If we were to prioritize, Emmett feels the excavator and the grader are key, given their age. Um, what was also not in this list though is a new water truck. The new water truck is. Pretty much done for, um, which makes of course grading very challenging. And so that, you know, in order to get a new water truck, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, another option Nathan had talked to us about is of course renting to then own. Um, but we'd love to hear your thoughts about these as financial priorities.
You wanna hear from me?
Yes, Jesse, we'd love to hear from you.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks. Um. Well, the thing for me is I'm managing a fleet of equipment. Rounding up some, some of these numbers and, you know, just having a interface and work side by side with the town utilities over the last. Ten years or so, um, I have, uh, noticed that some of the equipment is a little older. You know, I've recently done a little bit more collaborating with Emmett and, uh, the Streets Department on some things. Um, and got a little, got a little bit closer look at some of the equipment and, um. It, it just looks to me like. Is, uh, is, is getting really high and not only that, but, uh, I feel like, you know, with, with managing my staff. And just with, uh. You know, trying to recognize the value of our, of our crews, uh, within the Public Works Department as a whole, as in, in. In its entirety, all three departments, you know, I feel that there's a lot of, um. Just pride in the equipment, you know, and when you're, when we're asking these guys to. You know, put their lives on the line really and, and operate, you know, old and, uh, you know, breaking down equipment. It's, um, it can be demoralizing and I feel that, you know, equipment is one of those things where. As it gets older, you know, you're gonna be spending more, more time and money. Just maintenanceing it and thinking, and keeping it running than you would if you were to just get an, uh. You know, send that old equipment to the auction and get a newer piece of equipment. And the financing and the lease options and. Uh, all the various mechanisms for getting newer equipment is, is really great right now. Um. So. I wanted to see what it would look like. I mean, I don't know what we're doing for, for maintenance. If, if Emmett is. Spearheading all of that himself, or if there's a mechanic that we have, but the amount of equipment that we have is a. If there's a full-time maintenance position there and, um. You know, having newer equipment will do a bunch of things. It'll reduce our downtime. It'll give our guys more of a sense, and gals. More a sense of, a sense of, um, pride of their. You know, of, of their, their place of work and, um, also reduce our maintenance costs. So. So that's why I wanted to see, you know, and so the way I manage my fleet is not where we just. Sell everything and buy everything new, but it's kind of like the computers where as things get older, we. We, um, sell them. And, and then we'll buy a new one and we'll, we'll do that with either financing or with a lease that we can then convert to a purchase after the lease expires. Or in some cases, we'll just rent the equipment as well for smaller jobs and whatnot. So I wanted to, um. Recommend that we consider at least replacing the old excavator. And some of the other stuff that X, that Emmett could prioritize and say, look, these, these units are getting. Very old and it would definitely make our lives better if we could get newer equipment in some of these. With, with some of these units that we've been operating. So, so that's why I asked for those numbers. Um. I would like to see us have a, a plan for, for maintaining newer equipment in general. Uh. Just, uh, as our standard, uh, operating procedure and, um. So that's, that's where I'm coming from in all this.
Thanks, Jesse. She, your perspective has some, uh, a lot of equipment yourself.
I would love to just let Emmett really quickly speak to the maintenance. I think that there's.
Yeah.
Uh, it's important to know, Emmett, if you wanna go ahead.
Yeah, so I would agree with Jesse that, uh. At some point, the upkeep of this equipment gets unrealistic as, as it gets older. Um, and, and yeah, we, we don't have a dedicated mechanic. There's. Three people in the Streets Department and, uh, we, we do all of our own maintenance. And it is time consuming and it retracts from the work we can do. Um, I mean, for, and so our water truck is from nineteen eighty-four. Um, it's nearly forty years old. The town purchased it in nineteen ninety-six. And we've been using this water truck ever since then. And, and this is essential to our grading operations. And I mean, anyone who's owned a forty-year-old vehicle knows that. It's difficult to upkeep and you, you really, you can't count on it being reliable. Um, so yeah, I would agree that at some point we have to consider, uh, upgrading our equipment. It's. It's, it's getting to, I mean, like, like Jesse said, it's getting to a point where it's unrealistic to keep maintaining it.
I, I have two questions. Um, what did Wagner say about the, you know, availability of vehicles? Cause you know, there's tight. Vehicle markets tight, you know, used and new, but how, how about this kind of equipment? What's the availability to buy it and how soon would you get it?
Um, well, I know that there's used equipment available. As far as the wait time on brand new equipment, I, I don't know what it is at this time.
And my other question is, did we look into a, a used water truck or is a hundred thousand dollars a used water truck? Did we look into a used water truck?
I don't have any quotes on used water trucks at this time. That was just a ballpark estimate for a new water truck. Um, but I also wouldn't be opposed to something used. If it's more modern than what we have now, um. I, I just think, uh. I think it wouldn't be difficult to improve over what we have at this time.
I also wanted to add, we do have a line item for equipment, maintenance and repair. You know this, Emmett. So in sewer, that's fifteen thousand, not much, and in water, it's nineteen thousand.
I wanna caution that, that the equipment for water and sewer is, is different than. This water truck and these street equipment needs. And so I think we have to caution not pulling too much from utilities because they have a ton of their own. Equipment maintenance for those facilities themselves.
Can we actually, um, buy street equipment with water or sewer funds? Like, I thought the. Water and sewer funds had to be spent on water and sewer facilities.
Yeah, I, I, Rita, correct me if I'm wrong. I do think there's a cost sharing because some of this equipment is shared. Amongst, uh, the different departments, like I, uh, and I'll look to Chris and Emmett to comment, but I know that. Quite often utilities are needing to use streets equipment to, you know, unload chemicals and that type of thing. So. There may be able to be like a joint sharing that occurs, but yes, this is more streets equipment than it is utilities.
Um, are there any grants available for? Um, equipment like this? I wonder, I, I did a little bit of searching. I couldn't find anything.
Yeah, what, what about through IIJA or ARPA or something? I wonder if there is something more for these kind of capital. Costs for infrastructure.
Maybe I, you know, IIJA, maybe I think it's pushing it a little bit because that's for, you know, your, your true physical infrastructure. Um, I haven't seen grants and, and Emmett, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, more often than not, it's like. Electrification of your tractor, which is great, but it's not our needs. Um, and that's more of the, the type of grants we see. Have you seen any, Emmett?
I don't know what grants are available. There could be some, um. And yeah, if there are any, I think it would be worth pursuing, but at this time, I don't know. What, what grants are available for this.
Is that something Jen Walts can do? Look into those?
Uh, she, she could. I will say, you know, Chris Pelteer was the Grant Master. I think everyone knows that. And if he didn't find it, it probably doesn't exist, um, because Chris would have gone for it. And we're all, I know, Emmett and I are both on listserv.
IIJA and ARPA have come out since Chris has been gone, so.
No, Chris was here for, for ARPA, but again, IIJA is very specific. And you could choose to use some of your ARPA funds to buy, potentially buy some equipment.
How much ARPA funds do we have available?
Hundred and, Rita, help me, a hundred and eighty thousand?
A hundred and, almost a hundred and ninety-two thousand. I mean, some of that was given to, um, Barb. So I, I'd have to look, I can look that up though. Do you guys give me a second?
I mean, didn't we use some for grit removal? So we could probably.
Yeah, so a hundred and sixty-seven thousand is still going towards grit removal, but of that payment we received this year, um. I think almost all of that is still available and I will get there in a minute and I will let you know.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to using some of that. I, I wouldn't be opposed to using some of that money to pay for the new water truck or, you know, one of those things.
Yeah, I think that would be a really good use of the funds and, and for these other other vehicles, could we start some type of, um, savings for street equipment, um, in the general fund or the?
Even before that and even before allocating ARPA funds to it, what I would like to see similar to the technology issues that we're having is, is us start to be more proactive and not let this get to this point. Um, you know, I, uh, people keep saying that like, you know, BOTs in the past have not approved spending on needs that we've had, but I have never seen these things come across, you know, my screen. So I don't think that that's actually the case. I think what we need to see is a five-year plan. First, I, I completely agree with everything trustee Seaver said. What Jesse said is spot on, I think. I think we need a five-year plan for equipment, vehicle, maintenance for every department, for utilities, for streets, for every department, so that we have it on record. Uh, that that's what we're looking towards. That's what we're saving for and we can identify funding for those issues as funding opportunities come up, but we need to know what we're looking for. And so without a long uh, looking plan of, you know, we know that the water truck is thirty-eight years old. It doesn't, we, we know that we need to replace it. We don't need to wait until something breaks. We can make that plan to replace it long in advance of things, uh, going too far awry. So that's what I would like to see out of all of this is long-range planning for replacement of, uh, equipment and vehicles. Uh, regardless if they still work or not, I think we need to be replacing things earlier.
Yeah, I think that would help us if, if we need to prioritize. I think, I totally agree. I, I that that is kind of key, the first step. And then from that, whatever funding we realize we can use, we then utilize. So maybe we have to buy used or we'd like a new, or maybe we can buy a new, or maybe we do the lease to own. I like, I like the lease to own idea too, but really knowing what we need to do this year and what we need to do next year and the year after will help us in advance.
Yeah. Yeah. I like that idea of having a strategy for, um, keeping our equipment, um, in good shape and, and, uh, um, purchasing new equipment and upgrading when we need to. Um, it has to be, it had, you know, and identify the funding as well. Um, with, with this strategy.
I personally would not want to see any of this stuff put in the twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, just because I don't, first of all, I don't think we have the money, but, but secondly, you know, I don't, I, I think we need a, a, a long-range plan that, uh, you know, puts the safety of our employees, our workers, our, our staff front and center. And then the efficacy of, uh, of their work as a secondary priority. And we, and we go from there and in the future we'll be more prepared for these expenses rather than seeing, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one big hunk, just on one bullet point on, on, on a slide here. Uh, we'd have a plan to actually fall back on.
And Wagner will typically offer, you know, five years, zero percent interest financing for a larger piece of equipment like that. At least offer that to me. I imagine they would offer that to the town as well. And so it wouldn't be that we would plunk down that amount in cash necessarily, but you know, be able to come up with that amount, um, over the course of several years, it would be financed for us. And the thing is, I guess, if, if I were going to recommend two pieces of, well, one piece of equipment to Emmett and I, I, I don't, I think we, we default to Emmett's judgment on this because I don't want to pretend to know his equipment better than him, but it's just the excavator, um, because the excavator is required in the time of when we have a water leak or some kind of utility that needs to be repaired. And if that, if that, um, excavator doesn't fire up immediately, first time, every time. Uh, also the windows are all missing on it. So if you're working in the middle of a winter day, when you need to be able to repair an emergency utility, uh, leak or a break, um, in the middle of a snowstorm, for example, it's, you know, really difficult. So, um,
Yeah, that's absurd. That's ridiculous. That needs to, that needs to be solved as soon as we can possibly solve it. We also have to not be in this situation over and over again. Every year, there's some big emergency, you know, kind of purchase that we need to make and it, we don't see it coming because we didn't know that it was a problem, right? So that, I could really think that we need a solid plan moving forward for how we're going to replace all this equipment.
It'd be, it'd be a great way for all the departments to try to, um, I mean, I, I don't want to get here and putting out directives to, to the staff, but like for any functioning organization of each department kind of has a, or, you know, a, 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 a strategy of, of especially for like replacing expensive things and maintaining and replacing expensive things. If that's kind of laid out in each department, it would, this would have been in our budget, you know, a couple of months ago. We, we'd have been, we'd have been looking at these numbers.
Well, what, what's the plan though? Like they can't continue like this. We were talking about this excavator. We're talking about this water truck. We need to give them something, right? I didn't, I hadn't thought about the, uh, the not paying all at once for it, um, and just doing an interest fee loan. How much would that be to put the down payment on it and how much would our payments be every month? Like what? For, and I mean, I feel like we have to do something.
I, I, I think, yeah, no, I, I agree. And I think like i- if they were to make a priority list of which vehicle is, you know, which vehicle, this one, then this one, then this one. And then I agree, looking at used or looking at lease to own or, you know, zero in, interest financing. That's how we should go with the, the prioritized vehicles, my opinion. And then look at some of that grant money as needed.
Yeah, uh, yeah, look at the, um, ARPA funds as well. Maybe the, yeah, if, um, maybe Emmett and Nathan and Miranda could take a look at this and come back with a proposal for the.
Obviously we can't do it all, but like we should do something. We should get.
Let's do as much as we can.
Guys are chipping away at this or next year we're going to be looking at this and then some, so. That's.
Agreed. I agree. Yeah.
So I did, I did find, uh, so what we had left from the second payment of ARPA is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So you're right, Miranda.
Awesome.
That, that's something.
I, I do want to evaluate the criteria for ARPA. So yes, we will absolutely come back to you with a priority list and I'll also talk to streets. Streets, or excuse me, parks, parks didn't seem to, to Nikki kind of already outlined that and she didn't feel like there was any urgent need for her. Um, but also talk with utilities, uh, and, and I know they've started to think about this. So we'll come back to you with all three public works departments. With that five-year kind of asset management type plan outlining our equipment and that replacement needs.
One thing, as you do that work, Miranda and Emmett, for, that I would love for you guys to, um, just consider is the idea of a service technician who would, uh, basically keep all of your equipment running in tip-top shape, uh, all the time. We have a, a fantastic state-of-the-art shop that you guys have. Hopefully we can get the, the heater working properly and, um, and I feel like we have a fantastic shop. We have a, a nice collection of equipment and, um, I, I feel like you guys, you and J-Rom and, um, uh, uh, forgive me if I'm not remembering. I think you got another guy and ma- maybe another opening for another guy. But you guys, it's, it's a lot to just think about grading and drainage and, you know, how to work the earth and the soils and doing things safe. And, you know, that's a lot of, of knowledge and expertise that I feel like, you know, for you to also know how to maintain and do all the, the high-level mechanics and hydraulics and, um, you know, window repairs and so on and so forth on this older equipment is, is a lot to ask of, of anybody. And, um, you know, I'd like for us to consider the idea of bringing in a, a full-time or even three-quarter time uh, maintenance technician to, to make full use of that, that amazing shop that we have.
So I'm wondering if, um, if any of these older pieces of, of equipment could be sold, um, if we do replace any.
I believe they could. Uh, we'll let it, Emmett speak to that.
No, Emma already has a Mack truck he's looking to sell and we did sell off a truck recently. Um, so, so yes, of course, if we were able to, to replace, I think, again, I don't know, Emma, if you're there, if you're still with us. Um, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, yeah, I would pursue selling the old equipment. Um, I don't know how much it's really worth at this point, but I, I guess it'd be worth pursuing to, to see if we can sell it and put it towards the more modern equipment.
So we'll come back to you with that list and some recommendations. Um, the next thing on this list though is Public Workshop. Um, currently we budgeted twelve thousand five hundred to do options one and two. In that email from JVA, some trustees have felt like we should just budget for one, two and three, because if one and two don't work, then we already have the funds to go straight to three. Uh, so that's something we'd like some feedback on from the board.
I mean, I, I just wanted to say one thing up for having talked to Nikki and you the other day. I mean, they're throwing away a bunch of paint. I mean, hundreds, if not more dollars worth of paint annually, um, because it freezes. And they're running upstairs on space heaters. So those electric bills are, are way high. So there's a lot of things we're spending money on because of the nature of that place. So definitely, hopefully options one and two will take care of it. But if need, you know, it's just a recommissioning of that system, but if, if, um, option three is needed, it seems like there's a lot of money being spent now because it's so cold and like Emma just alluded to, or Nikki said, you, you bring in a vehicle, um, in the winter and it just doesn't thaw out. So you can, I mean, it literally ice stays on it inside. So, um, I'm for that money because I think they're wasting a lot of money because of how cold it is.
Yeah. I mean, either way, uh, there needs to be heat. I mean, it, that's.
They're working with fingerless, they're typing with fingerless gloves on, on those nine-year-old computers.
Yeah, ridiculous situation that we're in.
Human rights sort of thing, you know?
It's really awful. Budget, budget for all three, for Christ's sake, please.
Yeah, yeah, that's important.
Okay. Well, budget for all three. Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, last thing is the forty thousand dollars. It is currently listed in a CIP to go towards the Ford Lightning. There was some discussion last budget meeting about does the forty thousand dollars just go to Emmett to buy whatever truck he needs for streets instead of saving that for when the Ford, we'll finally get called, our number's called for the Ford Lightning. Uh, we'd like some feedback on that.
I mean, how bad do we need it?
There's two, they drive two thousand and eleven Chevy Silverados that are by no means the best vehicles we have of all the, the utili, the, all the public works. They were driving utilities vehicles until we became staffed. In which case those utilities, they went back to utilities, leaving streets with, Emmett, would you agree? Probably the worst of all the vehicles we have, aside from a Parks truck, which is practically decommissioned.
Oh, you need it pretty like.
Yeah, I'm gonna look to Emmett, but I, I, yes, I believe so. But Emmett, do you want to speak to that? I'm not sure if we lost him. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I'm still here. Um, I mean, yeah, I, I would like to pursue replacing at least one of our vehicles at some point. Yes. I mean, same with the equipment. They are getting to a point where they're, they're getting worn out and they're nearing the end of their life and the, uh, the upkeep is time-consuming. And I, I would like to see the money allocated a vehicle.
And, and just a reminder, this is already in the budget that you see right now. So it wouldn't be an additional financial impact. It's just basically instead of holding the money for the Ford Lightning, which is an incredible opportunity, but we don't know when our number is going to be called. It's just using the funds to allow Emmett to buy whatever truck he needs for, for his use.
It's worth waiting for the lightning personally.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that kind of given, I mean, on a, on a, on a value kind of ideals, you know, whatever side, you know, envision side, the climate side of it is great. And the practical side, you know, I have a colleague who just got one and waiting for one is the biggest pain, but he brought his weekly and he, you know, he's a, he's a builder and he travels a lot for his projects. He brought his weekly gas bills from two hundred and fifty dollars a week down to eighteen dollars a week with charging. And he runs his whole job, this may or may not apply to his streets department, but then when he gets to a job site, he runs his job off of his truck. So, so I, I mean, he, it, it's, that vehicle really pays for itself. The challenge is how long will we wait? But the wait might be worth the payoff. Um, not to mention the, the, you know, the, the low impact, which I am very, very firm believer of, the electrification of fleet will ultimately be a great way for us to be able to go. But that particular vehicle is showing itself to be really worth the wait and worth the money.
Well, it seems to me that, that we're going to have opportunities to get electric vehicles in the future without these ridiculous wait times as it becomes more common and, you know, that kind of initial burst fades away. The fact that we as a town are locked into that waiting period when we've got like needs right now and people are struggling to get their jobs done. To me, to me, it's not worth, it's not worth the wait right now. Uh, and I, again, we can plan to electrify our fleet when it's more practical uh, to do on a, on the town, from the town's perspective. Um, and I think we should do that. But right now, these people need to get work done. And, you know, they just don't have a car to drive around. It's, it's kind of a goofy situation to be in.
I would like to see us not lose our place in line and, and allow Emmett to buy a new truck. And then if we get, if our number gets pulled, we can have Emmett do a supplemental budget request. See how we're doing. Maybe another truck breaks down and we need another truck and, and, or we have a good sense of our five-year plan and our five-year plan kind of will, will give us a little sense that we can also take advantage of the Ford Lightning. Or, you know, we can sell our newer truck if we have to, but we could swap it out at that time. But I don't think we should uh, sit around and, and make our, our guys work in, you know, sub, subs- quality conditions. Um, you know, while we're waiting for, uh, a Ford Lightning because I really want to take good care of our, our utilities guys, you know, and gals and, uh, crew, staff and, and it's, uh, you know, we had a, we had, um, some staffing, uh, shortages in the middle of this past summer and I don't want to ever see that again. I want our guy, our gals and the guys to, um, this to be a really competitive place to come work, you know, it's, we live in an amazing place and I want to pay our, our people well and, and give them good equipment to work in and, um, that's, that's where I'm coming from with all this.
Now that, I think that's exactly right. I mean, these trucks are not losing value, right? Like if we buy a truck now, we can sell a truck for good money later. And, and we don't need to lose our place in line. And I think we, I think we should, we should do exactly what Jesse suggests.
I like the both end approach because we need a better vehicle just to function and then keep our place in line because those electric vehicles will pay for themselves.
Yeah, they're super cool.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. I would agree with that. Yeah, that we should buy a truck now, but keep our place in line for the electric vehicle. Because to that point, the Parks Department only has one truck. So I mean, in the event that we ended up getting two, it's not like it would go to waste.
Oh, yeah.
Just a reminder, the Parks is budgeting for a truck, but I do agree, you know, if you think about it right now, we have three trucks, but seven people. And so, you know, of course utilities, it does a bit more independent work. So there's three trucks over there for three people. It'd be nice to start having enough trucks to allow our team to spread out and, and have access to a vehicle instead of dropping someone off, you know, in old town and then having to go back and pick them up because they didn't have access to their own vehicle to get over there.
Okay. Can Brian Biggs use his, um, motorcycle with a sidecar?
Yes, Brian Biggs will.
As a town vehicle now?
Well, he'll also do his little, his one-wheeler, uh, scootery thing because that'll get down there. Um, okay. Well, that's what we will do. And then again, no changes to the budget because of that, um, we'll just revisit under a supplemental if our number is called next year. Okay. I'm going to take us backwards now. Talk about some personnel considerations that trustee Seaver has also recommended, plus uh, an addition from someone else. Um, one was to increase the wages for Parks and Streets to twenty-one to twenty-five dollars an hour. I want to note that you. I want to note that utilities operators already receive between twenty-two to twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, therefore, this would be specific to Parks and Streets only. Parks and Streets currently hire their employees at twenty-one dollars an hour. And because there are no certifications, increases typically come in the form of merit raises. Um, I'm just gonna go into the second one really quick. The second one to that is increasing the public works manager and supervisors to sixty to seventy thousand. Um, the range for the utilities manager is already there, but that is not the range in which uh, the current Parks manager and Streets operate in. That is not their current salary range. So looking for some feedback on that. Uh, one thing I will note, though, here is, well, the the discussion trustee Severs, as he noted, really is the priority is public works. Uh, if you were to increase manager supervisors, you do have a lot of other managers and supervisors who we would recommend evaluating their salaries, uh, so that we are, uh, competitive and we are also, there's equity amongst department heads. Uh, because if you did an increase like this for public works, that becomes a lack of equity amongst all other departments.
And what departments are you talking about?
Um, yeah, I'm talking about, you know, admin, community center would be other department head structures that would not, that don't currently operate in this salary range.
And your, this is increased public works manager supervisors, that's Streets and Parks, is that correct?
That would be Streets and Parks, yep.
Now, now, they, they were given a raise when Chris Palatier left, right?
Correct.
Part of his, because his salary was distributed amongst everyone who reported to him, is that correct?
Correct, yep. Their, their ranges cap out, um, you know, I don't want to get too deep into people's personal salaries, but their, their ranges cap out. Um, one of those positions range caps out just slightly over sixty thousand. The one of the other positions does not even hit sixty thousand as the range.
Now, and and looking at the org chart for, um, for Parks, you have a a, uh, Parks, um, a, a, a Parks lead reporting to a Parks manager. And the Parks manager does not have any other people under them. So I'm wondering why we have that sort of org structure where we have a manager, a, a lead reporting to a manager, manager not having anyone else reporting to them.
So when we have, when the position was created for Parks manager, at the time, the discussion was that we would replace the position Nikki currently held, which was a Parks lead. Um, so that structure remained the same by adding in a Parks manager, but not removing a Parks lead position.
So what, what are their, so, so Nikki, Nikki just supervises the Park Lead and then the Park Lead does man, uh, management of all the other people? I don't understand, what are, I guess, what are the, um, responsibilities?
So Nikki oversees, I don't have her job descriptions right in front of me, but Nikki oversees the whole Parks Department. So there's, so while I would say that org chart's probably a little off, you know, she does oversee Mark and Brian and then the fourth person, um, you know, in her absence, of course, then then Mark steps in to provide that oversight. Uh, Mark is probably more of a dotted line oversight and there's direct reporting to Nikki. Um, so Mark is gonna oversee a lot of the day-to-day operations. Uh, Nikki's gonna handle more of the administrative functions of the role itself. And then, like, her staff, you know, Brian's gonna be dedicated to rink and park, excuse me, rink and tennis. And then the other employee we're trying to hire is specific to sidewalk, recycling, um, and those types of tasks.
Okay, and then the, the, uh, uh, wage is twenty-one dollars to twenty-five for all the Parks and Streets operators? And you said currently they start at twenty-one?
Early started twenty, twenty, okay.
Yeah, so the Boulder County, uh, living wage for a single person with no children is twenty-one point zero six. So, um, I was looking at Longmont's, um, uh, um, uh, their, uh, their, their report on their, um, employees and what they make and all that. Um, and they're starting everyone at twenty-one point zero six. Um, so, yeah, just to let you know, and that was a huge jump from last year. It's like four dollars jump, maybe. It's expensive to live in Boulder County.
Agreed.
Miranda, could you, could you just say the number of people, uh, that would need to be increased to a sixty to seventy K annual salary if you wanted to do it for all department heads?
I'm probably gonna need Rita here, you know, I think, you know, I think it's, it's a little, let me take it back a little bit. You have department heads currently in that range. The question becomes, is it, is it fair for certain department heads to remain in that range if everyone else gets pushed up, but they don't? Right, it's like that, that balance of, of structure. So I think it is three department heads, I can think of Rita, that would, that are not currently in that range. Um, four, actually, four department heads, and then there are two department heads that are in that range, but then that second part of that question comes into play.
Miranda, I've, I'm, I don't want to get into this big debate, but why wouldn't it be fair for the other department heads to match the wage that other department heads are already receiving? Why would they think that's unfair and need to get a raise on top of that? If they're already receiving that, wouldn't it be the other way around? That the ones who don't receive it are feeling like it's unfair, the equity on that level? Like, why, why do they have to get a raise just because the other people got a raise to match what they're already getting?
You know, I guess I'm just gonna use my, myself and I, it's a poor example, but I'm enjoying it. If all of a sudden every department had made the exact same amount as me, does that make sense? You know, that's really something you have to think about, like, you know, you have certain people who require bachelor's degrees or certain qualifications that maybe others don't, like, there's just gonna naturally be a poll in which certain people are compensated differently than others, given the nature of the job in which they do. And if the plan is to pay everyone the same, it, I just, it, that's not typically how you would structure an organization where, you know, your top, your top people are making the same as like mid-level managers.
No, I hear you on that, yeah.
So Miranda, is this something a board member brought forward or is, I can't remember?
This is something trustee Severs had brought forward, so I don't know, Jesse, if you want to jump in, but, um, these were recommendations by Jesse.
Um, yeah, I don't, uh, I made the recommendation, you know, something I would like to see. I, I didn't give it a whole lot of thought and research as far as, um, you know, how it relates to the rest of town staff. I definitely think, Miranda, you should be making the most money out of everybody that we hire just in terms of the level of responsibility and complexity that you're wrestling with. Um, and, uh, as far as, you know, the, I don't know who else we're comparing the Streets Department to, for example. But, you know, I know that working with heavy equipment is, there's a lot of danger involved with that. Anytime you're digging a hole, um, you know, people die in open excavations at a higher rate than any of the other, um, trades in America. And, you know, there's, uh, the working conditions are often grueling and the level of technical skill that these guys have to have is, is, is really high. And, um, you know, uh, I feel that I just, I really want to, for us as a town, um, to take really good care of them. And I feel like they will take us in return by, you know, giving us their best work and, you know, keeping streets that we all feel proud of and, you know, helping us to develop and maintain good infrastructure. And, um, so, really, I, I don't know how much to give them a raise or anything along those lines. I just want to take really good care of our of our public works. And, um, I personally feel that, uh, you know, that ought to be one of the most important things that we're, we're doing as, as a town, like.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
What is this gonna set us back?
Providing infrastructure. We're also providing police, also providing administration and planning in the form of all of our town staff, our administrative staff. But our public works, I just feel is.
So if we give everybody a raise, a few dollars, and give the manager, I don't know, how mu- how much do they make in right now?
And that's what we need to know, that's what we need to know are the real, like, differences.
I mean, we're already in the hole by this mount.
So I can speak to that. So basically, and Miranda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, public works manager and supervisors are below, they're right at, right below the sixty thousand mark, okay?
They wouldn't be that big.
So, well.
You would budget at the seventy thousand, like, we're always gonna budget at the higher end.
Okay.
So sure, if you want us, I mean, you could give us a directive to say, like, pick those managers up to make sure they are at sixty, that could be a directive in which we could come back to you with, with those numbers. But I think the whole point here is, is the range? Um, you know, is, is here's the range we have. And and so often then, based on performance, those managers would be able to receive compensation upwards to seventy thousand based on performance.
I did want to make a correction, I'm sorry. So what I had quoted to you guys is what they're making currently, okay? So I just did a quick math on the highest one of those. And if we were to give them, um, the projected two percent COLA plus up to two percent merit, that would put that highest paid individual at sixty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And that's what's been budgeted for twenty twenty-three.
I think, though, again, the point of this discussion is that range, right? It's not just about, you know, if we want to pay them, the, again, if that's the expectation is to tell us, make sure we get those two managers into the sixties. I think that's a directive we're looking for, but the, but the way this was brought forward is a full range, in which case we would have be, correct me if I'm wrong, Rita, we would budget like we do with any other open position, at seventy thousand as the highest.
I, once again, I, I would really love to see, uh, you know, something that kind of says, this is what we're trying to do across the board of the town. And then we could incrementally raise salaries year on year until we get to where we want to be uh, in order to catch up with where we've fallen behind when it comes to inflation and when it comes to rising cost of living and all those things. Like, where do we need to get to versus where we are across the board? And then make those increases, uh, consistently, but responsibly, year on year in order to hopefully give our employees more money, but also to make sure that we don't blow our budget all at once in one big year of spending. So, you know, I still think that co- kind of compensation study that gives us a plan over, you know, maybe a three-year period is really necessary. I think point one here, uh, raising wages for Parks and Streets to twenty-one to twenty-five, I think that's a no-brainer and we should do that one. Uh, that, that I have no problem with at all. It's the, it's those, uh, salary adjustments that are more complicated and create a domino effect. And I think we need to do it holistically as, uh, a- across town staff and across the management structure. But we just need to see what, what it is. Basically, Miranda, I think we need to see what your plan is for compensating staff, not my plan, your plan.
Well, and I think that that's, you know, to your point, it's going to have to be a five-year plan because I think I mentioned to you all on the supplemental, I was looking for a ten percent increase and I had to scale that back to four percent to get the budget to even where it is today. And so I had to make the cuts in all the places I didn't want to make the cuts, which is staff, merit, and COLA-based increases.
Right, so if COLA and merit are a certain amount and we tack on sort of, uh, another amount year on year over the course of three to five years, maybe we can start to outpace, uh, how far we've fallen behind over time. But doing it all at once, I think, is gonna be, uh, it will be bad on multiple levels because it's gonna confuse things for other department heads, perhaps create some inequities and also put us in the hole budget-wise. So I would love to see, uh, a, a compensation increase plan. It doesn't even have to necessarily be directly related to other towns, right? We know that, uh, it's expensive to live in Boulder County. We all have a good sense of what, uh, folks are making in other municipalities. We have, uh, that document that you sent to us, uh, a few days ago, that's pretty comprehensive in that regard. They'd be quite easy to cross-refer, cross-reference that. All I really want to see is what's our three-to-five-year plan for compensation increases across the board?
So, um, I, I, I've signed.
Real quick, guys, I, I'm gonna, and Karen, I'll let you go, I just wanna, um, so we have thirteen minutes till ten o'clock. We haven't covered any of the possible revenues, um, and, um, also the current CIP project. So, um, that's heads up.
And I don't want to go over tonight.
I don't either. So, we have homework to do if we don't get to it, that's all.
Yeah, I think one of our challenges is you, you know, by the time you set your public hearing, you know, we have a public hearing set, is, is you need to have your budget in a good shape at the end of the day on the fifteenth, which is a regular board meeting and there are other items. Um, so, you know, for Mayor Billy, for you to navigate that a little bit, is, is you, you shouldn't be still having questions by the time you bring this to a public hearing. You should have your budget set for public feedback. And I think we're a little worried, we're not quite near that yet.
Thank you.
So what I, what I was saying was, um, I've signed up to do a mini compensation study using the CML data, um, comparing our current salaries and wages and benefits with, um, that data, the Boulder County living wage and maybe some other surveys. Um, and then write a, a short report on that. So I'm not sure, I think I'll, I'll have that done like in the next couple of weeks.
So I just wanted to say one more thing. So as far as what we budgeted so far, just so everybody understands, for twenty twenty-three, which, you know, might be the way to go. We have, in my budget, I did calculate, obviously, at the max, meaning four percent increase for everybody, okay? And that might be something, we can go with that and then come up with a five-year plan like trustee Kumsizmail has, you know, proposed. But I just wanted to throw that out there, that it is budgeted at the highest level, the four percent increase. And that would put both of those positions, the public works managers and super, one a little bit above sixty thousand and the other one just slightly below sixty. And remember, again, this is just a recommendation from a board member, so.
And what about the wages? Would that put him at twenty-one dollars an hour?
What about, there's a little bit more calculation that would have to be there because we don't have currently, we'd have to revisit, you know, how the staff currently are paid and the breakdown within that twenty-one to twenty-five dollar structure. We would have to go back and recalculate, uh, the new position under Streets um, and how much that becomes, uh, annually because we were asking to hire one new person. So we would, I don't know, Rita, I don't think we can give that answer right now because we need to look at the spectrum.
I think we could put that in, personally, in the budget, that raise for the operators. It's not gonna be that.
Are you talking about from the twenty-one to the twenty-two to twenty-five?
Yeah, I feel like we all agree on that right now, so we could just.
A dollar now would be two thousand and eighty dollars per year per person.
There's four people.
And we'd want to make sure that employees who are currently here, who are making twenty, of course, are adjusted appropriately. If twenty-one becomes the new hiring wage, then we would want to make sure we do a slight, a, a slight increase for those who have been here for a while.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Then obviously that will affect the general fund.
Yeah, we're gonna be in the hole, but I feel like I'm personally okay with that. I don't know what else feels, but I feel like we gotta make choices, you know?
I mean, all we can do is, is get kind of your nod to, to put it in the budget and show you what it looks like.
That would be helpful, then we see the real numbers.
Okay, so the last one is, and we didn't talk about it too much, but, you know, there, you know, that there's always been a goal of bringing the sustainability on full-time. Um, currently, the, the thought was, could we bring her on at, at kind of the bare minimum salary wage that we pay per our resolution is forty thousand? In order to provide that person with benefits, um, currently, Erica, who's in the role, is a contractor who is covered under a grant and towns, and we pay eighteen thousand, I think, seven hundred and fifty to match that. Uh, and so it would be kind of an, an increase to bring her on, plus the way, the south, excuse me, the. Uh, and so it would be kind of an, an increase to bring her on, plus the way, the south, excuse me, the, the fringe benefits. To bring her on as a full-time employee, but uh, there was that kind of some discussion about whether that's something to pursue. This year, um, the her salary could be still offset by the grant itself, but of course, there would be a financial impact. Because of the, the fringe benefits for any full-time employee.
Is, is, is there a quick number for the, the general cost of benefits per employee?
Thirty percent of their salaries to.
Marita?
Well, thirty percent, you're talking just about Social Security and Medicare? And are you including the health insurance? The health insurance is really the big one, right? So, um, you know, I, I can't give you a quick estimate on that, I'd have to look at it.
Because, I, I mean, so the difference is right now we pay eighteen thousand six hundred or something like that?
Eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty, that's contract.
So it'd be twenty-one, two fifty difference if we're paying the whole forty, but then, but then the other amount on top.
We have employer's taxes, the retirement benefits, the health insurance, um, that's on top of that. And again, that would be the general fund, yes.
So it may be like ten thousand would be, we, we don't, with, again, we need better numbers, um. Cause it, it looks like we'd only be paying a few thousand more dollars a year to have her full-time, but.
I think it would be a lot more.
Right, with all the benefits.
Well, we pay twenty, how, how, how much would they match? I mean, we'd pay maybe say twelve thousand dollars for that extra, if we go with that thirty percent model, or you know, number.
The, the total we could get for this is fifteen thousand, there's no more.
Twenty-five plus twelve probably, thirty-seven.
Yeah, we can pay this back later as like a supplemental, I, I think we need to know, you know, more.
I think that's a lot of, uh, just for clarification, that's a lot of why we're asking these questions. We didn't stick these in the budget, they were, and we cut them out, and so we need to know if you want us to bring them back as, as an impact into the budget. Or if it's not a priority right now, that, that's why these are coming before you like this.
Well, I'd like to see only number one of these three things in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, me too at this point, I, I like all the others' ideas very much, but I feel like. We can't afford it right now. That's me, I don't know.
I think one's key, it'd be good to see some numbers for number two.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just a bummer because Erica definitely.
Why, I love Erica.
Already worth a lot more than forty grand, but.
Um, but do we have the extra ten grand, whatever, if we're, you know?
Right.
Yeah, if I, uh, I recall when we were looking at, we had funds to bring on a sustainability coordinator. A parks manager or a grant writer, and we chose to go with the parks manager and, you know, the grant writer. Probably, like, I'm not saying that we should add that to our budget now, but that would really, could possibly help, help us, um.
I thought we.
But we have a grant writer, I mean, you're right, she's a contractor, but we have a grant writer, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was more of a, a full-time employee, I think, is what we were looking at. So, um, so are we gonna stop at ten? I can keep going, can we keep going with?
It is a work session, so you could continue forward with whoever wanted to continue.
I'm gonna bow out, but you guys can keep going if you want.
What I was wondering, if we could do that.
Miranda?
Yeah, I mean, you can keep going in a work session with, it doesn't even sound like a quorum issue, like you can keep going. For as long as you want to keep going for those who are interested in present.
Alright, let me take a pulse real quick, um, Karen, since you can keep going, Eric?
Uh, yeah, I can keep going for half an hour.
Jesse?
Um, I could, I could keep going for, for ten to fifteen minutes or so, I'd like to just. Make a case for a whole bunch of revenue generating opportunities that I've identified and, and then um. Maybe not stay for an entire discussion on it.
Well, maybe you'll describe it so well that you'll leave us speechless, that'd be awesome, Nicole?
I'd be good for another ten to fifteen minutes, that's about it.
Cool, I will stay at least that long, okay, um, we are good, Tanya, I don't know if you're gone, but thank you.
I'll stay a few more minutes, I'll just, when I leave, I leave.
Okay, well, thanks, say goodbye.
I, yeah, I think this one is, is pretty, I think I already know the answer. We've already prioritized them, the way they're listed. From left to right and then down, is how we recommend selling these vehicles. What is listed is blue book value, that's probably pretty generous, we may not receive that. Um, Troy and I could start selling off some vehicles because, that, you know, this is not even our whole fleet. Now, I believe we have seven vehicles total, so we could start selling off maybe the first three. And then as we bring in the officers, we'll have the revenue to, but, but Rita should ideally book this as revenue. So that we can use the vehicles.
I'd be shocked if you can't get the value in this market.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're happy to, so my recommendation is, Rita, I think we need to book. This as rev, you know, it's gonna be an in and out, but we'll book it as revenue and expenditure.
Expenditure to allow us to spend those funds on a new vehicle, so it's gonna be an in and out, just like the sixty thousand that have. Booked for a new vehicle for the PD as it stands in the budget, um, so yes. Uh, if that's, if that's what we're wanting to do, I'll be adding those first three items to the budget. Which one changed the, the, um, bottom line?
And my recommendation, if, if the board was comfortable, is let's add all five and then we'll prioritize selling off the first three, and if we are lucky, we can sell them all off. And then get new vehicles, then that's what we'll do.
Sell them, sell them. Listen for more than the value and see what happens, because I think they'll go.
I'll tell Troy to work his magic.
It's a tight market.
Yeah, does everyone agree with that strategy? That it's an in and out, so it doesn't have an impact here. Okay, alright, let's take it back then to revenue, I'm just gonna go. Back to that slide, so first things first, there was a discussion about maybe looking into low-interest accounts for the funds in the reserves. Um, C-Safe is an organization we could work with, we could invite them to give a presentation to the board if there was a desire to learn more about this.
Yes.
Look, we're gonna do super fun, we always do. Uh, paid parking, so I met with Idaho Springs, so what the information you have here is based on Idaho Springs. They have a really nifty calculator, um, which when I plugged in the total number of spaces we have between. Visitor-centered parking lot and First Street, it's a potential revenue of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. There is an upfront cost, of course, of buying the kiosks, anywhere from two to three thousand, we can purchase them, use or lease them. You should have a tech service that kind of runs the backend side of this, that's anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand. Um, so really, when you're looking at kind of your expenses to your revenue, you know, you could easily bring in. Hundred and ten or a hundred-ish thousand dollars up as potential revenue if we were to keep going on paid parking.
Oh, yeah.
How, how did they calculate that, that number? I was trying to look at that calculator, unfortunately, it wasn't like live with formulas, so I couldn't. It's a little over two thousand bucks. A year per spot, which is much more accurate than the original number I heard a couple months ago, but um. Um, how, yeah, how exactly did they?
So the way the calculator works, and I, I know you may just need to unlock it, you, they, so on the left-hand side, there's a place where you can indicate how many spaces and that'll change the whole calculation. It's a combination of the, the rate in which the paid parking is charged at, and I don't remember off the top of my head what there is a setup. Um, it takes into account the fines in which would be charged to someone if they were to park over there a lot of time. And it actually takes into account free spaces, so residents in Idaho Springs do still have free parking. And so this calculator takes into account that you may have people parking using their resident parking pass and therefore would not be paying.
That's good here.
So, Miranda, what, what exactly is included in tech services? When I, I did a little bit of research on paid parking and I didn't see that there was tech services, there was like a. Uh, maybe a license that you paid each year, um, but, and then there was the hardware, the parking kiosk. So, do you know what the tech services is all about?
Um, yeah, let me get my notes, it's, it's basically that, like the, like a park mobile, you know, service where. You would scan your kiosk, you know, ideally the kiosk code is gonna be the quickest way to get people to pay. You're gonna scan the code, it's gonna take you to a website, that website is gonna be kind of your hosting platform. Idaho Springs uses Interstate Parking, and they actually then kind of manage. Um, the oversight of, of the, your parking operations, and that way you don't have to have a staff member to do so. You have this tech service, um, we would need to do code enforcement, of course, which Safeville could do or we could hire. Um, but they maintain kind of the hosting platform for where the payments come through.
They also do tech support for people who are having trouble with the app and things like that, like, I think that that's kind of necessary.
So, I, I would, um, for something like this, I would be a lot more comfortable if we weren't counting on. Revenue the first year, if we were just counting on a break-even kind of situation. Um, because we really, and maybe scale it down to. Just First Street or just the visitor center, um, and see how, see how it works out, and have we talked to the businesses? To see if this is something that they would, um, would be agreeable to.
There was that survey about paid parking and, and, and we had businesses take it on, and I know the DDA, and I don't know Barb, obviously you're here. Um, I think that the, the general sentiment was there had to be some sort of. First fifteen minutes free, which Idaho Springs does in certain areas, or there, again, the resident free parking. Um, my recommendation would be to have, uh, Jonathan Kane with Idaho Springs come, he obviously worked with Green Mountain. And have him present to the board on that, um, but what he said is, no, it wasn't popular at first, like businesses and residents may not love it. But they kind of learn to live with it, especially when there's that free component of either fifteen minutes to run into the deli. Or you're, as a, as a resident, you can park for free.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just envisioning New Moon Bakery and Cafe, and I know a lot of people drive through town and they stop there and they get their coffee and. And if they see that they have to pay to park, um, the New Moon may lose a lot of business, so. So I think, um, before we embark on doing this, maybe we'll, we talk to the businesses that are right adjacent to. Um, the parking where we're gonna be doing paid parking, I, I, I just. Yeah, I, I just feel like it might backfire on us, um, especially if we're counting on a. A hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in additional revenue, um, when we're, we're just starting to use this.
Well, one thing I would say is, well, first of all, every town on this earth seems to have paid parking, so. The fact that Netherland doesn't is just a strange, weird outlier, more than anything, but. Uh, I think that what I'm worried about is that there's, uh, that the way that we enforce it, so if enforcement is incentivized. By ticketing, I think that we all end up having a fairly unfriendly town, uh, where you'll have enforcement. Officers or, you know, parking attendants or, or people scanning license plates, trying to ticket people as soon as possible, and that's what I would like to not see. So I'd like to find a way to have a paid parking system that's very flexible for residents, that allows for. Uh, quick stop and shop fifteen-minute uh, parking, but that also is fairly friendly and, you know. Ask people to pay, tickets them when they don't, but there isn't, there aren't people out there like hunting for tickets to give.
I, I don't think that's gonna be the worry, we've had the two-hour parking. Signs up for years now and there's been no hunting down of that, so.
Well, it'd be fairly automatic in most of these systems anyway, um, you know, rather than.
I don't know how it works, but it's very easy now. And you're right, there's nowhere you go now where you don't pay to park.
I'm in favor of, of this paid parking, and I don't think we're necessarily, I don't know what you mean by counting on the, the revenue. Karen, I think we can. Uh, you know, I agree with you that if, if we end up with a surplus, then, then we can replenish some of our. I don't know how you guys were saying, asset depletion.
Yeah.
Um, but we shouldn't plan to spend this money until we have a couple of years of track record under our belt. And then we can count on it as recurring revenue at that point, but I, I think any revenue that we're able to generate through some of these newer, um. Newer opportunities that we could pursue, we should, we should put back into our. Our, our, our assets.
I mean, I don't really think we have a choice, you know, we don't have, uh, the. We need to come up with a way to make more money, so.
Yeah.
I think the PC, didn't the original plan just call for like twenty-five spots, I think, on First Street? Um, yeah, I'm just for sake of starting it, maybe we can just go with the first sixty-seven, I do think. You know, I, I don't know if you're able to break out what the business owners said on that parking survey, you know, sp- specifically. But I'm gonna get a sense of what they think about it, uh, you know, if we're gonna do go with sixty-seven and do the visitor center, um. And.
Go, so go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, um. Yeah, now I was kind of just going with that, I thought that the PC had recommended first a, a smaller kind of experiment to see how it goes, and yeah, I think it's smart not to count on any of this money and. Whatever we get's kind of gravy, but keeping it small and simple, and I'd say, you know, when we get into the details, like at least fifteen minutes or thirty minutes, you know, or free for locals, I guess.
Well, I think one of the risks though, and what we have to make sure that we have expert advice on, is that. I don't think it's as simple as starting in a small area, because what you end up doing is impacting adjacent areas more than anything. Right, and so if you make the VC parking lot paid parking, everyone's gonna try to cram parking down on the streets. Right, so you have to pretty much make it all paid parking all at once, otherwise it's not really gonna work, it's not gonna be accurate or reflective of the, of the reality.
Yeah, I would say, you know, one of Jonathan's recommendations, of course, is, is to, you know, since there's approval or moving forward is for me to talk to. Uh, places like Interstate Parking and, and get their recommendation for us, and so they would take a look at. Our pay, uh, what our parking looks like, um, you know, I would say Idaho Springs does have that free parking on the outskirts of town, and that's our goal, and so. I, what I do next is, is talk with them, but I, I agree with Trustee Seaver is that it does not make sense to. You know, book this as revenue to offset the current budget, but, and I read, I don't know how you want to handle that on your end, but just anticipate. Seeing revenue yet next year coming under this, um, so we can start to learn how much we could possibly make. For twenty twenty-four.
So what are we saying? We would potentially get this going, and then what about the expenditures that are listed here? Do we need to put those in the budget? I mean.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, and is that, I assume this is also in the general fund, right?
Yes.
Okay, so are we wanting to put in potential revenue or are you not wanting me to budget that?
I wouldn't budget that much, that's a whole year.
Why don't we just budget the revenue as the expense? Make it equal zero?
Right, to zero it out.
If our expenditure, yeah, let me, let me do, make a couple phone calls, Rita, and let's work on this offline, but yeah, I agree, let's zero it out, let's make our revenue balance our expenditures.
Right now, it's eighteen thousand at the top, right, for expenditures, you know? Do we want to just put in that much?
Well, eighteen thousand plus code enforcement, so.
That's just one kiosk, so if you're looking at multiple areas, you need multiple kiosks, so, let's take this offline and we'll bring it back on the fifteenth. With more information.
Two things I'd say is that, like, yeah, when, when we get to this point, you know, the RFP process to find the right vendor, I think is key, and um. I've been, I've been surprised, like, I was pretty against this and have been for years, but I'm surprised, I've talked to a wide spectrum of people, and. How many people are for it, and I was surprised, so.
I, I think it will benefit residents, it will benefit businesses, and it will benefit visitors if we do it right. So we just have to make sure that we do it carefully and we do it right.
And our budget, it'll benefit our budget too.
Um, uh, as.
Residents too, right?
So if we could work this into wayfinding too, so that we have signs that direct, um, people to free parking. Um, so if they come into town and they don't, they see the paid park and they're like, oh, I don't want to pay. At least they'll know they can go a couple blocks away and, and park at free parking and then walk in.
Absolutely.
So let's go ahead and bump to the next, um, I think, are, 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 do you guys have what you need for us to look at the other? Thank you.
I just want, uh, Barb has her hand raised, Mayor Billy, I don't know if you wanted to allow her to just.
Barb, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see, please, star six if we can't hear you right away.
I just wanted to say, because I participated in the parking survey and so did a lot of people over at the, on the other side of town, and this will negatively. Impact the shopping center and our businesses. Um, it will have people parking in the shopping center and walking across town, which we already have a problem with. And if you do paid parking, our shopping center is going to be totally packed with cars and not people buying things in our businesses. So, when you're talking about paid parking, please think about everything on the other side. So when you're talking about paid parking, please think about everything on the other side of town and not just First Street. Because our twenty-six businesses in the shopping center pay a lot of sales tax as well. Compared to the businesses that are just in the downtown district and we all have to work together to make this work. Um, the second note that I have is yes, it would fall into wayfinding, Karen Blakewar, and we've been working on that for over two years. So this is something that should be discussed at length with the DDA. Um, and maybe it has to go to the DDA when we get our work session in January.
Thanks, Barb. So I realize I, I left you and I'm surprised no one said anything to me. I left you a little disservice here on this Metropolitan Football Stadium Fund. I didn't tell you how much we, we got. Um, so we received twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-three cents. As you'll note here, it has to be used directly for youth programming. Nikki gave some ideas. What we'd like to do is budget it as a straight in, straight out under parks to allow Nikki the opportunity to use the, this twenty-one thousand dollars for some of the ideas she outlined in the document in the packet. Anyone opposed to that? Okay, we're doing it. All right, I'm gonna keep going then. Uh, adopt a park, adopt a bench. I'm gonna turn this over to Jesse.
Um, well, I think, you know, possibly Eric Coombs is, uh, trustee Coombs is, might be better to talk about this because this has really been his thing. I just went to the last ProSAP meeting and I, and I also chatted with Eric offline and said, hey, I also want to adopt a trail. A specific, uh, one specific section of trail between the community center and Jefferson Street that is right next to my parents' house. And I would just like to maintain that trail and I'd like to put my, um, adopted by my company on there. So I talked to ProSAP about it. So the adopted trail really, I don't want that to diffuse the attention and the efforts that Eric has already been putting forward to, to work on the adopted bench, um, idea. I think that both of them have merit and there's an opportunity to generate revenue there. But I think that, um, the adoptive, the adoptive bench efforts have really been spearheaded by Eric at this point. And I don't even know if those are ready to be fully discussed or vetted yet. I just, um, I think these, this is another opportunity for us.
Yeah, they are ready, um, and we can bring it to a meeting, uh. Really, I guess it should be on the agenda, Billy and Miranda, for an upcoming BOT meeting, because I know ProSAP members want to, uh, speak in favor of it. Uh, I guess they've worked very hard to put together a policy for an adoptive bench program. Uh, you know, it would be a modest program, uh, our benches, the way that we have it set up now would be cheaper than, uh, any other town in the surrounding area, uh, which I think is, uh, more than reasonable. The whole point of adopt a bench programs are to allow people to memorialize, uh, somebody by providing, uh, financial resources to the town in their name. That is the point of an adopt a bench program. Uh, there is no other point. That is the point. Uh, so it is a revenue generating mechanism for parks. Uh, and it allows people to memorialize somebody that they love, uh, and the town that they, uh, that they either lived in or have, have some great attachment to. So we have a whole policy, uh, list set up there. But what really matters for us is, uh, you know, the, the, the town, um, fee structure, which we'll be voting on. And so we're gonna hope to put, uh, the adopt a bench fee structure that we've proposed, uh, into that, into that document at the end of the year. The way that the adopted trail program, uh, the way that I'm conceiving of it, uh, that it would work is that it would be a, um, um, uh, a number of years that you would commit to maintaining a town trail, a section of town trail. Um, and you could also provide payment for the maintenance of that trail in lieu of your, of doing your own maintenance, if that is what you preferred. Uh, what, uh, trustee Severs is proposing is that he would do the maintenance himself. So he would not be providing anything financial other than his time, uh, efforts and expertise for maintaining a particular section of trail. And you get to do that for a certain number of years and then you could reapply to continue doing it if you wanted to keep on doing it. I hope that makes sense to everybody. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Do you have any speculated revenue, uh, opportunity for, for us, for any of this?
You know, it's, it's tough to say. So what the, one of the big concerns last time this was brought to the BOT was the cost, uh, that it would for people, which again, I say, the point of an adopt a bench program is to provide financial resources to the town. That is the reason why it exists. Um, but, uh, what we've done is have, we have multiple structures. You can have a shared bench where there are multiple plaques. Um, you can have, you can buy an entire bench, uh, you know, you can put the plaque on, on one bench that already exists. And it will be only for that person and that will cost more money. And then there's a third tier, which is that you can purchase a brand new bench for the town. Uh, have it installed in a place that part, that park staff have already designated for the installation of a bench and, and put a plaque on that bench. So each one of those would be at different tiers. It's hard to say what the demand for it will be, uh, but many other municipalities have it and do it. Uh, many of them also run out of benches quite quickly. So we think that it would be a fairly successful program once it got going, uh, but we don't have a prediction of, of, of a hard number that we're, a target that we're trying to reach.
So we are, we are gonna put it in the, in the fee schedule, the adopt a bench, um, based on the discussion the other night. I guess the question is, is there a desire to, to increase revenue under parks? For this? Or do you also want to see how this program unfolds and, and then make an adjustment in revenue for twenty twenty-four?
I, I, it doesn't look like we, we can, um, really predict how much we'll be um, receiving in revenue from the adopted bench and adopted trail program. So, um, it'll be nice to have that additional money though, for sure, um.
Yeah, and I think that the other key to this is that the ProSAP is very, very keen on this money being reinvested into parks. Specifically, not into any other part of the towns.
Absolutely. It should go to parks. Yeah.
And to that end, uh, ProSAP, I mean, maybe this is, it's probably too late for this particular budget season, which is unfortunate. But, uh, I am also keen on the idea of there being a parks fund because parks has, uh, solid revenue streams hopefully going forward here, which include net drink and the tennis courts and things like that, as well as the adopt a bench and adopt trails programs. And those revenues really should be reinvested into parks projects, uh, is the way that we're thinking about it. So we're hoping that there can be a parks fund, uh, potentially for next year's budget.
You want it for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
I'd love it for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we were just very late in the season for that. Um, twenty twenty-four seems more practical at this point, but I can, I'm putting that out there now so that we can work towards it in twenty twenty-four. Uh, especially if those revenues haven't even started to come in yet. So I think it'd be nice to first see what they look like and then set up a fund.
Okay. What, what are the advantages and disadvantages of having a, um, parks fund? Yeah, I assume it's like, like a general fund or the.
Yeah, in the same, in the same way that, um, uh, trustee Severs, I think, talked about this before, that, you know, we have advisory boards that don't have budgets. And, you know, really, the, the ProSAP has been discussing how it would really like to be more of an advisory board on how to spend the parks budget. Um, rather than advisory board on how to like manage the parks in town, which seems to be a bit beyond the scope of a volunteer board in a lot of ways. So we'd like to see there be a very set amount of funds that the ProSAP was essentially in charge of advising on how to spend to the BOT. Uh, and that would be the main function of the ProSAP moving forward. And to have a dedicated fund from which to, uh, reference would make the most sense in that context.
And I'm in support of that, um.
I'm wondering from Miranda and Rita if there's any downside to having a, a parks fund?
You know, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I just know all the other funds are obviously funded by sales tax as well, right? Um, in addition to like the water and sewer fund, obviously with user fees, et cetera. I'm not sure about the legalities, if, if that's okay or not. And I just did want to say though, so within the general fund, just for informational purposes, it would become its own department, right? So I can always pull a report for that department showing revenue and expenditures, just so that's up there. Um, I am not sure there's any pros and cons and that is something I'm not familiar with. We'd have to do some research on that unless you know, Miranda.
No, I, I'm not sure either.
Yeah, for, for us, it's mostly because of these programs, right? Because there are, uh, programs that have ongoing revenue, which is, you know, the rent, the tennis courts and all those things, as well as hopefully the adopt a bench and adopt a trail program. That we really want to make sure that that money doesn't, uh, slip away under potentially future boards and end up, uh, you know, becoming part of a more general budget for the town. We really want those funds to be dedicated to parks in a formal way. And that's really the thinking behind.
Right. So my next question would be based upon the twenty-three figures we have out there right now. I think it's eighty-nine thousand revenue, but like over three hundred thousand in expenditures. If it's a fund, right? How does that look like? I mean, we would just.
Well, and that's, that's another, uh, way that we might be thinking of it is less, uh, in terms of like the public works overall component of parks and a, uh, we have to talk about this, right? But it's, it's really in order to sequester the funds that we generate from parks and make sure that they get reinvested in parks. That's the key thing.
Yeah, maybe it's more like a streets fund, except the revenue is not coming from sales tax, but coming from adopted bench, adopted trail, uh.
Because street still uses money from Public Works General Fund to do things. They don't only use the streets fund, uh, there, you know? Salaries and things like that. So that, that's the way that we're thinking of it.
Okay.
So that's our, our last, uh, slide. I think we're now just looking for some feedback on what you're looking for, for the November fifteenth meeting. Are you wanting another PowerPoint? You know, again, we really have got to scope this, you know, really narrow down this conversation. Do you want us to just plug in the figures and we'll talk about the budget as a whole?
I have a question, I have a question real quick. There were a few more slides on current CIP, CIP priorities. Um, did you want to get?
So, uh, we had reviewed those last time, although I'm happy to for you and Eric. But we, we talked about it at the last meeting and there were no questions, but if you'd like a quick, fast overview.
Why are some things red?
Um, they're red because the vehicle, of course, we talked about that, that we're gonna allow Emmet the opportunity to purchase a vehicle and then pursue the EV later. And then the other one is red because originally we had fifteen thousand budgeted as the Dr. Cog Transportation Plan match, but after talking with Karen, felt like thirteen thousand, seven hundred was more realistic because we're not going to spend the whole match next year since that grant is a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four grant.
Oh, she split in half. I, I didn't hear that.
Didn't even do a half. I think we did an eleven-twelfth split.
Oh, okay, yeah.
A very minimal adjustment, really.
Okay.
But we just wanted to highlight that those were different from the last presentation. I don't know if Eric and Billy, you have questions? I know we went through it with Karen and Jesse who are here.
I mean, it seems to me like there's several adjustments we're gonna be making. Are we just saying, I'm gonna plug those numbers in and we'll talk about it and?
I think so.
So our next meeting, we have the next, we have a budget meeting during the regular BOT meeting on the fifteenth of November. The next budget meeting is a public hearing. So on the fifteenth, I think we have to decide what, what kind of have firm up the budget. And we're gonna have the results from the, the election at that point. And what I'm gonna be looking for is I'm gonna be looking for a balanced budgets in all the funds. Um, so, um, uh, yeah, I, 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 I don't think that's possible right now without that additional, um, uh, tax revenue. So, um, yeah.
Yep. What do you mean by a balanced budget, Karen? That, that we don't deplete any of our reserves or?
Uh, no, that our operating expenses, expenses are, um, not more than our non-grant revenue.
So, I mean, that would be great, but I do also want to just point out that for the past years that we have been budgeting with, um, an operating, you know, difference in, in the negative.
Yeah, and I think something to consider too is we're bud- budgeting for a full, full staff police department paid from January one at the highest level of all their pay ranges. I, I mean, some of the budget numbers are.
Very high, right?
You know, they're higher than they're gonna be, you know?
And the.
But, but no, I mean, I think, I agree with what you're saying in, in theory too, for sure. It's just.
I'll also be looking at the fund balance to see that it's any non-reserved, non-unrestricted fund balances at least two months of operating expenses. So, um, you know, that's just how I'm gonna look at it. And, um, it's great if, you know, if, if we have enough revenue to do everything that, that we want to do. Um, but we might, you know, I'm thinking we could take some things out, you know, I, and I don't really have a visibility into everything in the budget, so I can't say what's a priority and what's not, um.
However, you are seeing every line item, though, you know, we're presenting that to you. Also, if you have any recommendations of where you feel we could be cutting the line items, that would be helpful to us. Like Miranda said, we've already cut this budget down. We fell to the bare minimum.
Well, well, I see the summaries.
You also get that, the, um, the summary and each line item under the detail that I provide.
It's in the, it's in the.
I would.
It's in the Excel spreadsheet.
Yes. I would need help. I would need help under, you know, really understanding that on like a project level and, uh, personnel level. I know our, our, uh, for, yeah, Miranda said, I asked her how much, what percent of our general fund expenses are going to personnel? It was like sixty-three percent, but I'm not sure that that includes, um, contract and current line.
The sixty-five percent can, includes all employees, board members, part-time employees, not any contractors at all.
Yeah. So I, you know, I only have one data point to compare that to. Um, Boulder County, they have, uh, fifty percent in personnel costs. Um, so, uh, you know, I, uh.
What's?
Yeah. See what you come up with for the fifteenth.
I'm gonna say that I'm gonna be hard pressed to say that we are staff-heavy. Um, I'm just gonna put that out there. I think that's the biggest thing. And I think one of my concerns is you can't, if staff morale is as tough as is, and then if we start slicing out staff members, it's gonna be really challenging. And I think that's where Rita and I are stuck and looking for feedback. Because yes, the fastest way to see some savings is cutting staff, but I'm not sure that that's the right move.
We're, we're not add, not adding more staff.
And I don't know how you operate a streets team of three. Again, streets being the smallest department doesn't, I, I don't know, we talked about this, Karen.
So how did that, how did that happen? I mean, we, we had like a streets and parks was one department. And we had six people in it doing streets and parks. And now we have seven employees, four for parks, three for streets. So is that the right balance there or should, should we have four in streets and three in parks?
So it, it's because the parks manager, when the parks manager happened, there, the decision was not to eliminate any positions that already existed. It was just an add, which is why you have a team of four, because the parks manager became that fourth employee.
You know, and I'm, and it could be, you know, our budget will be looking better once we don't have a Boulder County Sheriff's Office and the, also the, um, contract work that we currently have in utilities, um, because. in utilities, um, because we're not fully staffed there. So I don't know how, how to make it work, but, um, we'll see what it looks like on the fifteenth.
So I think though that what, it's gonna be worse on the fifteenth. And so I guess, I'm really at this place where, you know, not that Rita and I are not trying to, to do our jobs, we really are, but if there's something you want cut, we just, you need to say it. And, and you can't, we can't, we have nothing else to offer, and anything we, based on tonight's discussion is just going to make it worse.
Yeah.
Unless revenue comes in, uh, through the elections, okay?
One thing you could do is not include any increases over what, what's currently in the budget.
What kind of increases?
The increases that were talked about this evening.
Well, now that everyone's gone and talked about them, it's probably not the time to bring that up. Uh, I mean, uh.
What increases? I'm sorry. I don't understand. Yeah, that's not gonna make a big difference at all.
Is that the only, only one that we have?
No, we also have that other, um, I think it was twelve or thirteen thousand for public works. The, the heating is another one, right?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, I think that's the question. We would bring back the priority, of course, computers, that should be go into it. Um, and then, you know, uh, it sounds like we wouldn't do equipment unless we had, of course, a, a funding stream for it. But yeah, I think between just the computers, the heating and, and public works increase, that's, the budget is going to look worse.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's not the staff. It, I mean, I can't beat the staff because we have no other way of running a town. For me, the issue is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital improvements in the general fund. That's, that's the thing, right? And we're probably, I mean, if, if the revenue doesn't come through, uh, on the election, that is where I'm gonna be looking to cut. I mean, there's no, there's nowhere else that I can see that we can really legitimately cut.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm concerned about the, uh, ongoing operating expenses being greater than what we're taking in for revenue, because it.
That's just a budgeted piece. Actuality is, is way the opposite, right?
No, what do you mean?
Spending that amount of money, Karen. We're, we've never spent that much. It's just budgeted at the top end. We're not gonna, we're not.
The maximum budgets, everyone's taking the maximum, making the maximum amount they can make. Every, every job is full. I mean, that hasn't been reality.
So that, uh, the budget reflects reality.
I can't hear you anymore.
Oh.
Legal reasons why we can't do it that way.
We should change it so that the budget reflects reality.
I, I can't do that. I cannot budget pretending I'm only gonna have three police officers if the ask is to have five. That's just impossible.
I just don't think that's appropriate.
I look at other municipalities and they have, um, balanced budgets, so, um.
Well, you know, we talk about Boulder County, but you know, the scale is a total, you know, it's a, comparing us to them is.
Well, other, other towns and cities too.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're in a, we're in a bad position right now. That, I don't think anyone is.
We can say that, or we can say we are fortunate to have increased our fund balance five hundred thousand over the past two years. I mean, I look at that way, but I understand it's a concern, and it's not sustainable. But again, twenty-three is such an unknown with the PD, the pop parks department that, you know, I, I just don't know where else we could be cutting. So if you guys have any recommendations, let's hear it.
But this is why we have reserves, right? It's when things go wrong and we need to solve problems like the police department. Uh, like this, what happened this past year, that's why we have reserves. And I feel like if we're not gonna use them now, there's no other time to use them.
That's right. That's a good point. You know, I mean, the other option is Boulder County, right? So.
Is there anything else we need to talk about?
I think we should go to bed.
Yeah, I, I think we're good. We, 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 we need to think about staff morale and, and realize town government folks come and go and the staff stay, and we need to think about that.
And give big thanks to Miranda and Rita for your hard work on this stuff, guys.
You're welcome.
Uh, these are, these are, these are staff member salaries who also need to be raised, and so we need holistic.
For sure.
But we, we do, we need a plan, though, that is holistic, that allows us to do that in a comprehensive way and not just piecemeal as we have crises.
Sure. I do want to say though, I mean, and you all know this probably, but Miranda is budgeted a certain amount, right? And she's not there, so we could at least do that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm all for that.
Man, I think we should do that.
I think.
We'll be, we'll have an executive se- session next.
That's great. Happy to be.
Tuesday at six o'clock.
What, what's the purpose of the executive session?
Ri- Ri- Rita, just, um, let's see.
So it's a town administrator review.
Evaluating your review.
It is regarding me, and so, um, this is, so, so how it works when you do an executive session about a staff member, the staff member has to get permission for you to do so in either an open or a closed session. I, I am comfortable with the closed session, but have asked Mayor Giblin that I have the opportunity to attend for at least the, the beginning to share with you about some of the staff changes and to answer some questions that people might have about some of the recent transitions that have occurred within town staff.
Okay, that's, that's the subject of, of the meeting, of the executive session. Okay. Like, why did people leave?
Uh, I mean, why don't we get into that?
Okay.
Six o'clock next Tuesday.
Okay, sounds good. See ya.
Go to work.
Yep. Thank you.
Have a good night.